Good evening. Today is February 10, 2020. It is about six past seven. This meeting of the Planning Board is now called the Order. The first item on the agenda is a discussion of the Pledge of Allegiance to start of public meetings. This was discussed at the Board of Selectmen meeting on 28 January, and the Board of Selectmen, I think, has asked Keith to come to different boards and talk about the proposal, and so I invited him here tonight, Senior Chief. Good to see you. Do you like to sit next to Mary? Do you want to stand?
Yeah, it's fine.
Okay, sure.
So I appreciate your time this evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. You're right, on January 28, I did have the distinct privilege of making a proposal to the Board of Selectmen requesting that it be added to their meeting agenda, and I'm here tonight to make that same request for your board's consideration as well. In 2011, the Department of Veteran Services was asked to produce a level services budget for the following fiscal year, as was most departments. With that theme in mind, an immediate memorandum of understanding was drafted by my office to all of the departments with flagpoles under their jurisdiction. The town of Hingham currently has 37 municipal flagpoles spread over 14 different departments across the town. By utilizing a single vendor, both shipping and prices could be reduced by making one annual purchase in bulk. To achieve the benefit, the town's consolidated flag purchase program was born. A consequence of developing this program was incorporated into the vendors incentive program, which enabled accumulation of points to the town's account that could be redeemed the following year to acquire additional flags at no additional cost, similar to your credit card points. And if you turn to everyone's right, you'll see a flag set that's in position now that was provided at no cost over the last nine years. Our points have been used exclusively to purchase those indoor ceremonial U.S. flagsets that you see behind you. These beautiful displays now adorn each and every meeting room in Town Hall, including the auditorium, again acquired at no cost to the town. It seems only fitting that each and every one of us here, whether appointed or elected, is here to conduct the business of the government. Now that every room is flagged, I propose that each board, committee, and commission pause briefly prior to the start of each meeting to recite the Pledge of Allegiance to our flag. The pledge can be said in less than 12 seconds and allows us to pause briefly, reminding us why we are gathered. It also adds an appropriate solemnity to each body's proceedings, which should facilitate respectful and productive deliberation. So that's all I have. Pending any questions.
Thank you. One question. Have you been, you went to the Districts Commission, too, and proposed a fair?
Yeah, I recently went to the historic, yeah, a couple others. I've seen now that that task is going to be quite daunting. I was planning to go to each and every board and committee, and so with the help of the Assistant Town Administrator, what I just read to you is a letter that will be promulgated out to each and every one of those through her office for action, so that by the end of this fiscal year, I can report back, get back on the Board of Selectmen's agenda, and kind of get a feel of where everybody's at. So I'll gladly go to anyone that has questions, but it just seems, it's just too daunting right now, the time commitment.
Understood, yeah. Lot of boards, lot of committees in town, yeah. Well, thank you for your presentation. Any questions or feedback from the board?
I just had one question on the points program for the flags. Can nonprofit organizations in the town participate in that, too?
So we have a few that do right now. Father Bill's Main Spring, as you know, has the Commander Anderson House over on Fort Hill Street that houses six veterans within our community. They use the flag program currently to purchase flags for their entire organization. So, I mean, Quincy, Brockton, Hingham, Hall, they have various establishments in other social communities. There are a few others, Social Model Railroad Club that's in Bearcove Park, and very few others. We're branching out now, and it'll eventually, hopefully, within the next five years, the plan is to have it trickle down to where you can go on the town website, and if you wanted to use us as a vendor, you, too, could be able to participate in that as well. So it may go down to the single household as well. So yes, to answer your question.
Because I know the cemeteries, you put the flags in before Memorial Day, and typically they all have one central flag pole at the front.
Right.
And we typically, the cemeteries fund all that. Could we do that under the program on Memorial Day?
So how the program works is you would then, you would make out a request form. You would take advantage of our bulk purchase. I think we just spent just north of $4,000 a couple of days ago. We sent in our order for the entire town. You would get on that. You would save, first of all, you'd save about 52% just in the cost of the flag because of the amount of bulk, and then the shipping is incurred just through that one single shipping here. So, yeah, you could save a lot for your individual corporation. I know you're talking about the Liberty Plain Cemetery. Other cemeteries here in Hingham as well could take advantage of that, and the prices would be greatly reduced. And then what happens is we would tell you your flag is in, we'd give you the invoice, and whoever you decide to pay that. So Hingham Community Senator is also another participant.
Great, excellent. Thank you.
I do have one question, and thank you for doing this. Why, you know, did something come up that sort of prompted there?
Yeah, it took nine years to put the final flag in. So the final flags will be put in to the Board of Selectmen's room at the end of the month. They have, presently have flags, so it's kind of not an issue. We're just going to replace them with new, because I don't know if you've been in there lately, but if you touch them, they're rather, they're rather fragile.
I don't touch them.
Yeah, so those would be the last ones that we replace. It just happened to take that it took nine years to get every room properly flagged. It would be preposterous to make this proposal if there wasn't a flag already in every room, unlike schools, which it's a, it's a law of the Commonwealth, that a flag be installed in every room. So here it just took, it just took this long.
Yeah, and I'm just curious kind of how you make this decision. I saw this on the agenda. I thought, oh, that's, I've been on this board for 12 years, and, you know, we pledge allegiance on special occasions. The town, I think, does an incredible job of having a Director of Veteran Services, all of those things. So I was just curious as to why now. So I started searching, and there's, appears to be a lot of conversation about this in towns across Massachusetts right now. So I was going to ask you, how do we make this decision?
I think you just, I think the Board of Selectmen discharged him. We're getting feedback from the different boards.
Oh, so, yeah, I just have questions. I don't have feedback.
And I think they're gonna, I assume that they'll adopt a policy at some point. I don't know when, but...
It's possible that after I report to them that the next fiscal year would have some sort of a policy in it, if, but to have that was, would be kind of, you know, I guess counterproductive. The whole idea is to make that pitch now, to say, hey, we've provided this. The taxpayers have provided this. You're a government body. This is an elected body. Some are appointed. It just seems fitting that we do it. You know, we're here for the business of the government, and it just would give us that, that pause, that natural pause to say, hey, this is real. I'm here. I'm volunteering. This is what I'm going to do. So other towns do it. I think Hull, the closest town is Hull.
Town of Hull does it, I think. Someone told me that over the weekend.
And is it, is it...
It's not a precedent. We're not setting a precedent, but there is conversation about removing it in other places.
Or whether to do it or not.
I imagine.
Yeah, removing it was the...
Is it an all or nothing? I mean, will the individual, those 14 boards, make decisions on their own, or will we just give you feedback, and the Selectmen will institute a policy for the building, basically?
I think they're hesitant about doing that, but I thought was the gist that I got, that if...
So some could and some couldn't conceivably?
Correct. It's just to say, hey, these were provided. This is what we're asking. If you choose to do it, great. If not, then, yeah, that's above my pay grade. So I'm sure, you know, that's, that gets into a situation where, you know, if you're told to do it, it might not be as effective, I guess. I don't know. That's just me.
Yeah, no, I get that point a lot, yeah. Right? It's not the point.
Just basically, just to give you some background, some history, how we got here. Why, why now is the biggest question. It just took that long to get them on all the rooms. So that's why. So just making everybody aware that it's available, and hopefully you'll adopt it.
Great.
Well, I would just say, you know, we start town meeting with it, and I think it's a wonderful way to start town meeting, particularly like, you know, last, last year, where we had a very divisive issue on the agenda, a very passionate issue on the agenda, and I thought it reminded all of us why we were there. So I'll be interested to see what the BOS does with this, and that's, thank you, thank you for your presentation. Anybody from the audience like to add anything? No? Okay. Before I let you go, Keith, I just wanted to tell you, as a fellow veteran, you know, thank you for all you do for the veteran community. You know, I, I've talked to people from other communities, as you know, and I do believe that we have the best veteran service office in the entire Commonwealth.
Thank you.
And I truly mean that. So thank you for what you do for us.
Thank you.
And I've heard Congressman Lynch say the same thing on multiple occasions, so...
Yeah, he's a high pay grade to me. All right. Thanks. Thank you. All right. Next item on the agenda is a discussion of proposed changes to the zoning bylaw. The first item up is abandonment or discontinuance of nonconforming, single-family, two-family dwellings. The intent of this article is to specify exemptions that relate to abandoned or discontinued nonconforming, single-family, two-family dwellings. The proposed amendment would more clearly state that a conforming, single-family, or two-family dwelling use could be reestablished in a dimensionally nonconforming building or structure that had been abandoned or discontinued. The amendment would also limit the changes that could then be made to the building or structure to those that either, one, maintain or improve the nonconforming dimensions, and two, add or expand in a manner that complies with current height and yard requirements or act on anything related thereto. We did, we do have the benefit of having our town Real Estate Council with us tonight, so what I'd like to do is have Susan give us some feedback first. I think that will help us to kind of formulate our discussion, if anybody's okay with that. All right, Susan, thank you.
Let's just make sure I have the right one in front of me. This is, this is, so they were, just a little bit of administrative. I let Mary know you'll see it on the markups that you have, that the Board of Selectmen, once they compile all of the proposed articles for the warrant, have signed letters to them until the final warrant is completed and they're numbered, put in order and numbered. So all the zoning articles now have letters associated with them, and this article is now triple D. So this is abandonment or discontinuance of nonconforming, forming, single-family, two-family dwellings, Bill, as you said. This was proposed by the zoning board. Unfortunately, Emily couldn't be here tonight, so she sends her apologies. My, the comments that I had are not so much substantive as really just trying to make provisions that can be, get somewhat convoluted, try to make them a little bit more, you know, readable. So with respect to this article, what, you know, the, trying to follow the thread was the, you know, the challenge. And so I had, Mary and Emily and I had a call last week. I think intent-wise, none of the changes that are on my track changes affect the intent or the substance of what the zoning board wanted to do. My understanding is that this section, which is 3I-D3 of the zoning bylaw, has, has the, governs nonconforming buildings or structures. And there's a distinction between nonconforming uses and nonconforming structures. A number of years ago, there had been amendments to this section of the bylaw, 3I, in order to break out uses and structures and, and deal with them separately. And so under, under D, 1 and 2, D 1 and 2 govern nonconforming uses, and D 3 governs nonconforming structures. Within that, there was an abandonment, and, Bill, I think, you know, I may have still been on the board when we, when, when the board first kind of took up this issue of what happens to, you know, a single family or a two-family, and then over the years, as various issues have come up at the ZBA, the ZBA sought to refine it. One, the issue that happens is sometimes you have a neighborhood where, for whatever reason, there's a house, and it just goes into disuse. Often, it's because the occupants have passed away, and, you know, it sits in the estate, or, you know, that, that, those, those are the most common situations that have come up. But then, because the lots on a lot, especially in the north side of Hingham, the lots are so small, and the houses, like a lot of the houses, are nonconforming as to setbacks. So the, under the statute, unless the town makes it more liberal, it's two years, and now you can't use the structure anymore because it's nonconforming, and it's been abandoned or the use of the structure's been discontinued. So the, the result of that would be, if the town hadn't adopted more liberal standards, is that the only thing you could do with that house is pretty much tear it down, and then the house, the lot becomes unbuildable. That happened to a home that had gone into an estate, and then there was multiple things that came up there. The sewer was being brought into the neighborhood, and so the estate waited for the sewer to come in. Like, lots of things happened. It got beyond the two years, and then they sought to reestablish the single-family use. It was in a neighborhood where a single-family residence, a district, so a single-family use would have been allowed, but you couldn't use the house. That was on the lot, and if you tore the house down, you couldn't rebuild it because the lot was too small. And it, and for, from the zoning board's perspective, they said, well, that doesn't seem consistent, because the only motivation for the property owner is to just sit there and let it rot. Like, why spend any money on it? So that was the original genesis of this concept that there's a longer period of time first for reestablishment, before they are deemed abandoned or nonconforming, and then there's more liberal provisions for reinstating a conforming residential use in a district where it's all already allowed, but in a structure that hasn't been used for a period of years. So in, or because the bylaw is a little bit ambiguous or unclear, the zoning board proposed this article, and I know you did talk about it with Emily last time she was here, so I apologize if I'm retreading a lot of what was already discussed. But this would allow, this would allow the reestablishment of that use as of right. However, you could not then make the house bigger or more, you know, you couldn't, it wouldn't have the benefit of Hatfield that houses that have been maintained and not abandoned would have. So, but it, it's really a cleaning up and clarification of the, of the reestablishment of the use of these structures, but it's within the structure section of, of this, of the bylaw, the nonconforming. So I know that the, nonconforming uses and structures is one of the most convoluted, complicated areas of zoning law in Massachusetts. But that, that is kind of what the intent of it is.
So the way, the way it was presented last time, the way you've presented it is consistent relative to trying to provide a vehicle so that a nonconforming use, if there's been a two- or a four-year period of not active use of that building, where the building complied when it was built, so it's legally nonconforming because it was built to another zoning bylaw, in compliance with another zoning bylaw of an earlier time. And so typically, those earlier structures are, are protected. And so the structure's a function of the use, so the single or the two-family use would be still protected. And this provides a vehicle so that you don't have to upzone the property such that it could no longer be rebuilt. Upzoning, meaning conformed to current zoning requirements, which are, require larger setbacks, or, you know, less density, or things like that.
Right.
Or just different than what was originally allowed under the zoning when the house was built. So this gives a flexible vehicle. One of the questions that I have in this is that this is a byright position, a byright bylaw. And so I'm wondering in terms of, I think of the abutters, and I think if we're providing a vehicle that's flexible, that allows buildings that, most of these buildings predate the bylaw, that before 1941, some might be later, but most of them predate the bylaw. And the layout of the town, the character of the town is also a function of this legal nonconformity in many ways. If we were to, I like the idea that there's flexibility here to allow that character to be maintained, but also allow it in such a way where it meets, in terms of setbacks and density, it meets requirements of the new bylaw, but in terms of use, you still maintain what was allowed earlier, under an earlier bylaw. I like that. What I'm also wondering is, in terms of how do the abutters, in a byright situation, because this is a, can be, I think of the Hatfield, and I think of this and the Hatfield, and I think of the confusion and what happens with Hatfield. And the, and as Emily pointed out last week, there's something about the linear setback, the control. So I'm wondering, should we have a special permit function or something here, or a mechanism where the abutters could have a seat at the table when a project comes up for a permit?
Well, so just to clarify, the current D3B, which is what this is, hold on a second.
Where is it?
D3, I'm sorry, D3A.
Which, are you on page?
So I'm on page 49.
At the top?
Yeah.
3A?
3A.
This subsection, yeah?
Currently, currently, this, this is as of right. You have a small house on a small lot, for whatever circumstances, it's kind of sat there, emptied. It's exceeded the period in which it's allowed to be empty and still retain its grandfathered status. It can just go back to being a house. That's, that's what allowed now. The issue that's been coming up over at the ZBA is that the wording of it has been, you know, various applications have come in to the Building Department to try to utilize this section in a way that was much broader than the ZBA believed that it was intended. And so what they're actually trying to do is make sure that it is only addressing the more limited situations. So it's already as of right. What it further does, what their language further does, is it wouldn't allow it to be expanded as of right the way Hatfield does for houses that have not kind of gone to seed, I would say. In, that it actually, you know, prohibits that from happening. So it allows you to maintain the use of the property as a single-family home, but it doesn't allow, without further relief, which would require an application to the ZBA, to just say, well, we're going to reestablish the house after it sat here empty for six years, and we're going to triple the size of it. Or, you know, not only are we going to reestablish the use, but we're going to tear down that house and put up a gigantic house. It doesn't let, all it does is try to keep, you know, try to incentivize by allowing the reactivation of the house from kind of you having these dilapidated houses that are ignored and abandoned because, you know, there's nothing that the property owner can do with it.
No, I understand that, but what I was going to is, and I was rereading Emily's diagrams and her narrative, and I was looking at the diagrams, and I was thinking to myself, so you have a house, let's say, that's, the owner of the house, and let's say it's a two-family, because I know a couple of conditions, situations like this. It's a two-family house, and the owner is in a long-term assisted living situation, and that situation is going on six years. So the house is used, but it's not abandoned, and the tendency is not going to continue. So that house will still be maintained in terms of heated and lights on, but there's no, there's no timetable as to that house, when it's going to be fully occupied again by either the original occupant or somebody else. And the family doesn't want to sell the house. And, and so the question here is, we have a house in terms of this definition, which has gone past the four-year period, but it's not abandoned.
You asked that question at the last hearing, didn't you? Because I listened to it this afternoon, so it's forever.
No, I did. I did ask the question, but Susan wasn't there, so I'm asking the question for Susan relative to, it's still, it's still, in my mind, I think that this, the issue of the abutters and the special permit, I haven't heard that addressed. You know, how do, how are the abutters protected?
But from what? So now the house, in your instance, it's not creating a blight on the neighborhood because they are, you know, maintaining it, you know, notwithstanding the fact that the family member's not there. And then whatever happens, maybe the family member passes away, and now they decide, okay, either they're going to sell it, or a family member is going to inherit it, or whatever, buy it from their relatives, and they move in. So, but why does this, why would you, what's the special permit angle on that?
The special permit basically is the vehicle that goes beyond the prescriptive, which is two years and four years, and says that basically, if the property gets a special permit, that use continues. The non, the legal nonconforming use of the property continues.
But it's not a legal nonconforming use. It's only a legal nonconforming structure. The use is already allowed as of right. So you'd be asking someone to get a special permit to use a single-family house as a single-family house, although no one else in the neighborhood or the district's required to do that. So it's the structure that's nonconforming, not the use that's nonconforming.
So in the, in the language that you just, that you read earlier, the issue of, if we don't change this current bylaw as written, if a two-family goes past this four-year period, in order to be occupied again, it has to be occupied again as a single family because if it's in a district of single-family houses. What I'm saying is that if it's currently a two-family house in a district of single-family houses, that the use as a two-family is protected because it's nonconforming. It's before, let's say it's before 41, 1941. It's, it's legally nonconforming as a use, so the structure wouldn't have to revert to a single-family house because the use is protected.
No, the language in the, in the bylaw says it's a single-family dwelling or a two-family dwelling. So if it was conforming as to a single-family or a two-family, and the structure was previously, previously used as a single-family or a two-family, then it can be reestablished.
So this only has to do with discontinued use or abandoned?
Of, yes.
Of structures.
Yeah.
So in the, in the case of this person who is in assisted living for six years, nobody's actually living in the house, but they're paying the rent, they're mowing the lawn, they're keeping, the home fire is burning. That's not abandoned.
Right.
So nothing happens. They don't need anything.
Right.
They come and go every six years if they want to.
Right.
This applies, as far as I understood from listening to the last one, this applies to discontinued or abandoned, right?
So is, does a, does a property have to be occupied for the use to be continued?
Well, the courts look at kind of the, the intent in looking at those issues. So for example, the one that was a big issue, and I want to say it was four or five years ago at least now, may even have been longer ago. I mean, the house, the use was discontinued. It clearly appeared to be abandoned based on the condition that it was in. Like, you know, they hadn't maintained the roof. They hadn't been mowing the lawn. They hadn't been doing any of that. I mean, that was a, that showed, but at the same time, because that ended up being challenged in court, and the, and the ZBA, the, the ZBA looked at the facts and saw what the estate was doing, and waiting for the sewer to come in, waiting for, you know, trying to market it, having different issues within the family, and said, listen, there really wasn't an intent. They should have taken care of it better, but they always intended to have it be used as a house. They just had all these complications. So, you know, and that got appealed by the abutter, and ultimately, the ZBA prevailed because, based on their analysis of what the intent was. So it really becomes a fact, factual matter as to whether or not there was an intent to abandon the use.
Yeah, I think in your hypothetical, Gary, the fact that the, the water was still on, electricity was still on, the heat was still on the house, those are in dish of nonabandonment, I would say, right?
Is there any limit on that relative to timeframe? Because the thing I'm not quite resolved on is this two-year, four-year prescriptive requirement, where it seems to me there's a whole series of extenuating circumstances that always apply in a family or an ownership of a house, and it seems very prescriptive to me. And I'm just looking for a vehicle that gives the owner some flexibility to deal with these kinds of situations, which don't get resolved in two or four years. That's all. I mean, it could be eight years when someone's, before the final denouement happens as to what's going to happen to the family and house. And you wouldn't want a situation where occupied, if it wasn't occupied, that to be deemed not used, and thereby not used means abandoned.
But, but this provision would allow it to...
This provision would allow it.
But this provision would protect that and say, okay, even if it's 10 years, and as long as, you know, that it could be reestablished. So I, you know, it's, I, I think it's going to the point, if you're looking to try to protect the use of the structure in that circumstance, the existing provision and as amended still protect that.
So the other thing I don't understand is, why are you wanting this to hinge on structure? structure and not use, because use determines the structure?
No.
Isn't the use the program?
Because, so, under Massachusetts law, a non-conforming use and a non-conforming structure are treated differently. And the, what the, the ZBA is trying to address, a very specific issue, that, basically the ZBA, as you know, doesn't propose zoning amendments too often.
Yeah, we know that.
When they come forward, it's because they are seeing something repeatedly, and they're saying, okay, wait a minute, when people are before us, or when we're trying to apply the bylaw, it's where, it's not clear, or it's not as clear as it could be. And so this has to do with a very, very specific circumstances that has come up multiple times for the zoning board, where you have a house that, under state law, if we didn't have anything special in our bylaw, would be if that house is empty for two years, that's it. And all you're left with is a lot that's unusable with a building that's unusable, and it's tended to result in blight on neighborhoods. And so these, this provision, as originally proposed, and now looking to make it more clear, would say, we don't think that that is in the best interest of a neighborhood to have a property that for whatever reasons end up kind of becoming the unkempt, house empty, could be potentially dangerous, or attract, you know, vandalism or whatever else, that is not good for Hingham. And so, you know, this was proposed, and now they're refining it to allow that house, as it sits, in the same size, in the same, without expanding any of the non-conformities, let it come back to life, just bring it back to life.
And so it could come back to life as a two-family, is what you're saying?
If it was a two-family.
If it was a two-family.
Even if it's a single-family neighborhood, it comes back as a two-family?
If it was conform, if it was conforming when built.
When it was built.
So if someone had an illegal two-family, then they wouldn't get to reestablish it as a two-family.
Yeah, no, I understand, I understand.
But they could reestablish it as a single-family.
Even though the structure is now brand-new and not prior to nineteen?
But the structure would not be brand-new.
Well, say that it burnt down.
No, that's a completely different provision of the bylaw.
Oh, so it's just abandoned.
This is literally a house that's sitting there empty.
Okay, so the house is still there, you renovate it.
You just bring it, you just bring it kind of back up to code, yeah?
Yeah, renovate it, yeah. So i- is there a fine line between renovating and rebuilding?
When you say rebuilding, when you're tearing down and reconstructing?
No, like the windows have fallen out, the, there's holes in the roof, I mean, the...
Well, that's bringing it back up to code. So there's an example, there was a tiny little house on Friend Street, fourteen R. Friend Street, and it was on, it was been, it was been there forever, it's landlocked, it has base easements, and it had, and basically it ended up with the, having the benefit of this provision as well. And basically what they did is they shored up the foundation, they put a new roof on it, reshingled it, had to replace the windows, like to kind of make it, you know, livable and whatever, and that was challenged by the neighbor, and the land court said, you know, no, it wasn't, it was just kind of making it relivable, it wasn't deemed, you know, it, it wasn't rebuilding, it was just bringing it up to code.
It is kind of a...
But it, but it's the same, it's the same footprint.
Right.
With the same height and the same setback.
So what this does, so this zoning bylaw today allows that to happen, but restricts this new, newly re, newly brought-to-life structure to the footprint that it's on.
Right.
And to the use that's within it.
Which is the single-family or two-family.
Or two-family. So if it's single-family, it cannot be two-family, and it cannot be extended.
Right.
So the structure would have basically had to have an occupancy permit. The minimum condition of this building is, is that it would be occupiable. If a house had a fire, for example, and it was seriously damaged and had to be completely rebuilt.
There's different provisions of...
So there's another, but, so we cross, we cross the line when we get there.
Once you're talking about a casualty?
Right.
That is Section 1B. And if you, something burns down, if there's damage or destruction, you have to do it within two years or you lose it. So this is talking about a house that's sitting there that could be kind of renovated in the sense of bringing it back to life in its current...
Right, so it's minor renovation?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I mean, it's not, it's not, a house is burned down and you're rebuilding it.
Okay, so that, so that you wouldn't have the structure, but the use wouldn't be protected either then?
But the u, right, well, again, it depends. If you had a legal, single-family or illegal two-family, you can.
Okay.
But if you had a house where someone had illegally turned it into a two-family, they're not going to get that illegal two-family back.
That's understood, I just want to make sure that the legitimate occupancy continues that was protected in a non-conforming condition because it predates this bylaw, that's all.
Do you guys, any questions?
Yeah, is it intensified a defined term? Or a term that has like an art?
Yeah, it's on, it's in forty A. Section six, under the, under the non-conforming provisions of Chapter forty A. Section six.
As a defined term?
No, that, forty A. Doesn't, doesn't define, it's all, all of the non-conforming law in Massachusetts is all by case law.
Okay, so that has an accepted meaning then developed through case law?
Yeah, so intensifying a non-conformity would be, you know, it's kind of almost a redundant term with extend, so I don't know that you need both. So, because it, you know, it's kind of making it greater than it currently is.
Yeah, I, I personally don't love that word, because I find it wildly ambiguous, but if it has, if it is a term of art in this world, then I would accept that as something that's fine, but I'm not, I'm not keen on words that add very little, nothing.
Well, you know, I mean, I'm kind of not here to be the proponent for the zoning board, as opposed to kind of answer the questions about how the law does it. I mean, you know, Emily had said if, you know, the board, I know there's an, at least one article that we're doing on the twenty-four, that if you had more questions and wanted to wait to vote on it till the twenty-fourth, then she could be available that night.
And just, and then one more question, so is there any avenue to do things like alter, reconstruction, addition, extension, structural change? I mean, the way this is worded suggests all of that's foreclosed regardless of any other potential remedy that you could have to doing that.
No, no, there's, well, so it, it wouldn't be, it, so, because of the Hatfield amendment, if you have, it's, it's very liberal, so if you, if Hingham didn't have a Hatfield, which basically Hingham's the only community in the entire state of Massachusetts that has Hatfield, then, you know, you would have to either get a, you know, a finding from the zoning board, or depending on the extent of the change, potentially a variance. But it would require modifications to go through a zoning board process.
And you don't have to articulate that here, that you need to go through that process? This is not red to, foreclosing the building?
No, no, no.
I just have one question about the, about item one, where it says replacing the reference to the, what's in parentheses, to just single, is that, is that, is that correct English? A non-conforming use, single-family or two-family residential use?
No, so that's why in item one?
Yeah.
No, so single-family dwelling is the defined term under the Hingham zoning bylaw, which is why Emily is recommending that, instead of saying single-family or two-family residential, so it's replacing single-family or residential use with the defined term.
So there will be still parentheses?
Let me just double-check that. I'm on the right page here.
It just, it just...
Oh, yeah, I mean, it's not remove, all it's doing is replacing...
Okay, so it is English?
Yeah.
I didn't understand that the parentheses were staying, okay.
All right, we have some public comment on it. Please approach the microphone and just state your name and address for the record and ask any questions or have some comments. Mr. Anderson?
Hi, good evening, guys. David Anderson, thirty-one Old Colony Road. As someone who's tried to write a comment for this, I commend you on your changes, making it, it shall not, as opposed to it shall.
Yeah.
That's helpful. But I do have a question on the reconstruction question, because I see the word reconstruction. So, as I read that as a way person, I thought you could tear down the abandoned structure and rebuild the structure, as long as you didn't intensify or extend a non-conforming condition.
So you would, but that's, so that's, that's what's under Chapter forty A. Section six of the Mass General laws, which governs non-conforming uses and structures. So what, what, and again, I, you know, I think the board may want to wait and let Emily go for what the intent of the zoning board is, since she's representing, you know, speaking on behalf of the board who's proposing this. But I think the intent here was to make it clear that this bylaw was not going to allow those things as of right. That this, this, this provision of the zoning bylaw is not going to allow alteration, reconstruction, addition, et cetera, to be as of right by virtue of being, reestablishing the use in the structure.
But, no, but it goes, oh, all right, maybe I've totally screwed this whole thing up then, I mean, give me a chance.
Yeah.
However, that any alteration, reconstruction, addition, extension, or structural change to such building or structure shall not intensify or extend the dimensional condition.
Right.
So doesn't it, doesn't it suggest that I, I can do, I can do an alteration, an addition, an extension, or structural change, provided I don't extend or intensify? Or am I missing it?
No, I, that, yes, thank you for clarifying your question. Yes, I mean, the pro, I'll tell, from a practical standpoint, I mean, the, you could probably, you know, do alterations, those types of things, but for these houses that are on substandard lots, pretty much any addition is going to intensify the non-conformity, is what I'm saying. So it's, it is what you're saying, but it, it's going to be very narrow what you can do within that...
You know, and I get that, because Emily's graphics were really helpful to me, because they kind of explained that.
Yeah.
But I guess I come back to them, my first question, because I'm still not clear. If I, if I have an existing non-conforming structure, that's, let's say it's, like she showed, it's fifteen feet setback, and it should be twenty-five, it's been abandoned, and I want, and was a single-family use, I want to continue to use a single-family use. Doesn't this, and the word reconstruction is what's got me hooked up, can I come in, tear that down, and rebuild in exactly the same non-conformity, according to this?
Re, on the exact same footprint with the...
Exact same footprint, I can rebuild a brand-new house where I was, with no change in the non-conformity.
I, I think, I...
It says reconstruction.
It does say reconstruction, and again, I, you know, I, I think I have to defer, and, and I would suggest to Emily, because I wasn't at the last meeting. But, you know, their intent is to, as Emily explained it to me, but like I said, it was a short conversation on the phone, is to allow what's there to remain there. And to the extent it's reconstruction, it may include reconstruction, but I don't want to speak to, speak to the zoning board's intent, because I wasn't part of their deliberation, so I'm going to ask...
No, that's fine, and it was truly the word reconstruction that called me out, because that's...
Yes, because, but that's in, but that language is in forty A. Section six.
Okay, so it may have just been replicated. All right, well, maybe something to think about, because I read it as saying, and then I raised the question, if it had no basement, can I add a basement? You know, these kind of things, which might not affect the non-conformity.
But it might intens, but it may intensify the non-conformity, because now you're, if you're adding more livable square footage, now your FAR on the lot is intensified, which is where intensity comes in. So that's why I'm saying, you know, the que, that's where the intent of the, of the zoning board is important here, and I don't want to, I don't want to presume...
Okay, no, no, and that makes perfect sense. Can I ask a question too then about item three? And this may be just more of a legal question that I'm not familiar with. I don't understand what item three does, just because I don't probably understand the significance of it no longer being considered non-conforming once a permit or a special permit is issued?
So, it's, it's something, it's, something that's not allowed is, is considered non-conforming. Once you get a special permit to, to construct something or to allow something to exist that isn't conforming on its own, then it's no longer considered conforming. Once you have a permit for it, that permit renders it conforming.
I got you. So where, so the distinction here would be that it's non-conforming but protected. Once it's permitted, it can no longer be non-conforming, because by definition, it's conforming with the permit.
It's permitted, yeah.
Which trumps the, whatever else is involved.
Even though it's in the setback?
Let me look, I, again, this is, the, the intent of what the zoning board was trying to do here is not why I am here, because I'm not speaking to that. So I think we need to defer until Emily's here, because...
I'm going to have Emily to come on the twenty-four.
Yeah, because I, I mean, it was really kind of speaking, I was kind of coming tonight to speak more to kind of the...
Understood.
Can I ask one last technical question?
Yeah, yeah, we'll just get these back to Emily. Emily, in fact, Emily was, she was like, Susan, you're going to get stuck with all my questions, and I'm like, I'm not going to answer them, Emily.
We'll hold it over the twenty-four.
But so this is, we're making, you're proposing changes to the actual article, so I assume that this gets reopened then and reinserted?
No, no, so there's a scope, it depends on the scope.
Okay.
So, for example, there's other articles where changes are being proposed, but if there be on, if, the, the test is whether it's within the scope of what was originally advertised. This is all within the scope. So what, what would happen is, just for the sake of argument, if the zone, if the planning board said, oh, yeah, we think this is great, they, and they would then, their votes are just recommendations, they would vote to recommend this article with these changes, it then goes to advisory, and then, I think, the hope of the planning board, once they vote a recommended version, is that that is what the advisory committee would adopt as your recommended motion. So as long as you're getting, you're not getting too far outside the scope, or not outside the scope of what was advertised for the purpose of the change, then, then it can be modified and be reflected in the recommended motion of the advisory committee.
Perfect. Thanks.
All right. Any other pub, public comment? Mr. Pat just handed up first, I'll let you go first, sir.
Thank you. Tom Pat, Ship Street. So, I'm not looking for any answer from Susan, because I understand your limitation, but I have been speaking with Emily since last year, when this thing kind of came up. And it was my understanding that the purpose of this, this article was actually to, to expand a little bit beyond what the current bylaw said. And what it was designed to do was if you had to, if you had an abandoned, single-family, two-family on a lot, and part of that structure was, or non, non-conforming before it was abandoned, in other words, the typical example in Resident A., you have the fifteen-foot sideline setback, and it's five feet away. My understanding, the incentive, to incentivize trying to deal with these situations, which is, a lot of times explains the why, reason why it's sitting there like that, is to basically say, okay, you can reestablish the use in that structure, a single or two-family use, and you can expand that structure, you can reconstruct that structure, but the one thing you're not going to get the benefit of is Hatfield, which basically means that if a portion of that structure sits in between fifteen feet to, to five feet, okay? You, you can, you can reconstruct the structure, you can do all that stuff, you put an alt, an addition on, but you can't intensify the portion of the structure that's within the Hatfield, so to speak, okay? So what, if someone's looking at a piece of property, they can say, okay, you know, to incentivize trying to do something with this property, I have a lot that's ten thousand square feet, I have part of the structure that's in, it's in the setback, so to speak, what I want to do is I want to reconstruct the structure, and as long as I, for the new stuff, as long as I do not intensify the, the existing non-conformity, okay, then I can go ahead and do that. And, and, but with a little asterisk, meaning that when it comes to the portion that otherwise, you know, a non-abandoned property would have the benefit of Hatfield, you're not going to get that. So you're not going to be able to take that five-foot setback and run it down for the whole new structure. You're going to have to maintain exactly what is there if you want to, you can pull it back, okay, but you have to maintain that. And that's sort of the punishment, so to speak, that is going to be meted to the property for hav, having it let go, abandoned or discontinued. So that, and that's what my understanding... Um, so that, and that's what my understanding why this language in here was about, you know, the reconstruction, et cetera, because it was, it was contemplated that once it came back to being allowed use, that, you, you know, again, you want people to, to be able to do something. It was, I think the last time I spoke, it was sort of a policy trade-off, you know? And if you think about it, the neighbors, in terms of, you know, a dimensional issue, as long as that new portion of the structure complies with current zoning, if you think it from a neighborhood point of view, how can the neighbors really complain? Because that's what current zoning is. So as long as you're not, you know, running the structure all the way down the line at five feet, which you can do currently now, for, and then that example under Hatfield, basically, what's being, what's being created as new complies to current zoning. So that's the expectancy that neighbors would have, is that you would comply to current zoning. I guess one of the questions I, I would have for Susan would be, and you can maybe just put this on your list of, of, you know, to, to talk about, but, um, one of the concerns I'm thinking here is, you know, when you're using the word intensify, what I'm, what comes to mind is the Borkland case out of Norwell.
Yep.
And so basically, what Borkland said was that, I think it was an undersized lot, okay, and what they wanted to do was expand the structure, and the structure, and correct me, Susan, if I'm wrong on that, but the structure, as proposed, expanded, met all the dimensional...
Right.
And height setbacks. And the planning, or the ZBA said, you need to have a, what they call a Section 6 finding, okay, that it's not more substantially detrimental than what's there, and they said it would be, because now you have more of a structure on an undersized lot, okay? So, and then it went all the way to the appeals court, and the appeals court agreed, and said, yep, that's correct, okay? So I guess the question I would have here, then, because I, what I heard Susan saying is that she envisions it'd be a very few instances where you would be able to, to reconstruct the structure that, that wouldn't, that would not run afoul of the intensification issue, I guess is what I'm saying. So, so let me, if, if I may, give you an example.
Yep.
So if you have a pre-existing non, a, a pre-existing nonconforming structure, it's gone to abandon, discontinued, on, in Residence A, which requires 20,000 square feet, it's on a 10,000-square-foot lot, typically Crow Point, okay? And now somebody wants to, uh, get that property, they want to reestablish the use, okay? They would, a portion of the, of the structure is within the current setback, so it would be, you know, it, it's noncompliant, okay? So now the use comes back, now they want to put an addition on, and the addition itself complies to all the dimensional height and yard setbacks, but it's the Borkland issue, where you, now you have more of a structure on an undersized lot. Are we going to be running afoul of that in this situation, that, that a finding will be required?
See, I think, I think under your example, it, it could, it might be determined by the get, building commissioner that it required a finding, and would send it over to the ZBA.
Okay.
Um, because, you know, because that is, that's the, that's an intensity question, right?
Right.
Because I, I know that the example that you were saying, and to what, so if someone, typically, if you have a house, because I know this used to, this used to be, um, kind of part of the issue, and it, it comes up in most other towns that don't have this, you can do the linear extension, which is really, Hangham unique, that you could put an addition on your house, as long as, you know, if your house was 10 feet and it had to be 15, that means your addition had to start five feet in, and go, and then you're con, then it's within the conformity, and, but, um, you know, in, in some, some towns have, these provisions that are here are more five, six, seven pages long, because they've, they've kind of broken it down, and they said, okay, rather than kind of the blanket as of right that Hangham has with Hatfield, it says, in these circumstances, these will be as of right, these will require, you know, a, a, a finding or a special permit, and these are prohibited, which means you can only do them if you can justify a variance. And they, they actually break down all the different scenarios that commonly come up, and say, this is how we're willing to treat them as a community. Hangham's is, is, you know, much less specific about, about how, how it goes about it. So I, I think what happens is you have, you know, something comes into the building commissioner, and if, and if this, these provisions are going to apply, then that's his job as a zoning enforcement officer, to say, hey, wait a minute, you know, that addition is really going to overwhelm the site, I think it's, you know, intensify, or even extend it, well, not, maybe not extending the norm conformity, but extending it, because it's such a tiny lot, and might, and might kick it over to the ZBA.
See, and what my concern is, I mean, you could make the argument that anything more than what's there is an intensification, okay? So it's not a matter of degree, you know, it's, if you're one square foot bigger, you're an intensification. And, and, and I've always been kind of curious whether, you know, the, given the Borkland case, you know, in Hangham, are we inter, is the ZBA interpreting Hatfield as giving the protection against the Borkland issue? Because, because houses are being expanded all day long on undersized lots under, and under Hatfield, and there's been no finding by the board of, you know, the Section A is, 48, Section 6 finding. And, because when I read Hatfield, Hatfield applies to, talks about linear, and typically that would mean point to point. So basically, your setback and your height, it wouldn't apply to area, it wouldn't apply to, to your, I guess, to your frontage. So I, I, again, the only reason I'm bringing this stuff up, Susan, is because I think people want to understand how this is going to work...
Yeah.
And how it's not going to work. But I'm also trying to bring up, based on my understanding, and I understand Emily has to get in here and speak to this issue, but it was always my understanding that this contemplated allowing, you know, expansion of the structures as long as it didn't intensify, essentially, as long as it didn't run of, tried to take advantage of Hatfield, so to speak.
Yes, I think that is correct.
And like I said, that was the trade-off. The idea was, the neighbors don't like the fact that there's a piece of property there sitting derelict, okay? But you got to give people an economic incentive to do something with the property. So the trade-off being is, look, you're not going to be able, you know, to protect the current neighbors under current zoning, we're not going to let you run that structure five feet from the lot line and put a McMansion there. You, you can, if you can, uh, construct a new, uh, structure or addition that is within the current setbacks, within the height, current height limits, then go for it, because under a current zoning, that's what the neighbors have an expectancy of, is that, that, that is what can be there, okay? So I guess that's what my concern is in looking for this, looking at this, because it was my understanding, that's why the language about, um, you know, not, essentially not extending or intensifying, or improving, or maintain, whatever, all that stuff was in there, because it was contemplated that this was going to be permitted to happen. So I guess that's just one of the, one of the big issues that, that I would try to address. But if, but, so I'm, if I'm clear, Susan, are we...
I do. I, I understand what you're, I, I understand what you're saying. So, I mean, I, I think we're, you know, the, what's before the board now on this is kind of not a, how does the board interpret Hatfield?
Right.
So I think we kind of have to put that conversation to kind of another day.
Right.
Um, but I, I think because you had talked to Emily about it, and you were at the last hearing, um, you know, I think you captured again, I'm sure Emily will go back and watch this and just make sure that it, you know, was discussed, and she'll do any clarification she needs at your next meeting, hearing. But I hear kind of what, you know, your, your question about the intensity, your question about the intensity, and I think that's a question for Emily about the intent of the bylaw. Because, you know, the, the intensity issue in Hangham, because we don't have, you know, lot area, or FAR, any of those things, it really comes down to putting the larger building on the substandard lot question, um, and it is something that has been allowed to happen under Hatfield. So I guess, you know, that's the question for Emily, whether a conforming addition on a substandard lot is, would be captured by intens, intensifying or not, and, um, yeah, that's a ZBA question.
Just, because to Kevin's point, you know, when Emily did bring the, the examples in, this was the...
Yeah.
By way of example, because the reality is, as a result of, you know, residential A, residential B, and residential C, you know, getting bigger and bigger, most of the lots in Hangham, except for relatively new subdivisions, which primarily would be in the southern end of town, are nonconforming because of insufficient lot size. And so I think that's, that's just something, or, and frontage, by the way, you know, because, you know, most of the lots were created before the, for example, Residence B and C is 150 feet.
Right.
Right, yeah. And then 100, Residence A is 125 feet. So it would seem to me that, you know, my, again, my, and I'm just giving this as my two cents, so that when Emily comes before you, you can, you know, hopefully raise this issue with her, but was, it was my understanding that, that it wasn't going to, um, it wasn't going, you weren't going to have an intensification if you expanded the structure, this type of structure, as long as it may have met the linear setback and height requirements, that that it didn't, that it was on a substandard lot, which most of Hangham are, wasn't going to be a disqualification, so to speak, nor if you didn't have sufficient frontage, that that wasn't going to be a disqualification, because those conditions really don't, I mean, I understand the Borkland argument, but the, this really doesn't go to, those issues really don't go to the, you know, to the Hatfield, so to speak. So, all right, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Hershey, you had your hand up, you'd like to offer a comment?
I'm not sure this is, this is not my area of expertise, and we've had some discussions with the board, we've been through all the meetings, but now that Susan's here, and I heard that she was on the board at the time, I guess I have two questions. Why is there a difference in reconstruction? You're able to do a reconstruction on a single-family home, but not a reconstruction on a two-family home?
Where...
The word reconstruction...
Where does it say that? Where does it, it doesn't say that.
Can you do a reconstruction on a two-family home?
If, if it was a legal two-family...
Okay, so let me, so if somebody had an abandoned two-family home, let's assume it was abandoned, and they came back in, and they got, went to get it reestablished as a single-family home, then got it reestablished back to a two-family home, so they have the A1 and the A2.
I think you're talking about a specific house, and so I can't, I can't speak, I can't speak to that.
Okay, can you, can you speak to, is there a difference in reconstruction?
Reconstruction, it, I'm not, you know what, I'm, I'm not going to speak to, um, the hypotheticals that are not before the board tonight, because I, 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 with all due respect, Mr. Hershey, I know the house that you're talking about, and I'm not prepared tonight with enough background to kind of give an answer that can then be used kind of in a context that I'm, you know, is not specific. So I...
That's fine.
I'm not really prepared to answer that tonight.
That's fine, I think that's fair. So I guess for, for me, I'd like to see if the board is willing to extend it to the next meeting to go through and get some of these, I guess, for me, confusing issues resolved, and have something that's more globally, that incentivizes everybody to do something with their abandoned properties, whether they're single-family or multifamily.
I mean, the sense I'm getting, we're going to, we're going to hold it at 24th. Yeah. Thank you. Mr. Wilcox.
Ben Wilcox, Sixth Green Street. I'm hoping we can clarify some of the dimensions on this proposal. One of the problems we always have is we use words like dimensional conditions, or height and yard, and don't identify which one belongs to which category. So Susan, your example about making the building inspector use a determination of a zone to start off with, his idea of dimensional conditions would probably be linear, where you're probably thinking includes area. The second section of this, of this proposal has height and yard dimensions. I'd like to see those same words used throughout, to make it consistent.
Um, I'm sorry, so which section are you looking at?
So, uh, number, item two, number one.
Yep.
It says maintain or improve the dimensional conditions. It's too vague. Maybe not to you, maybe not to the board tonight, but it would be in the future.
Okay. Yep, well, it's not, yep, I didn't draft this, came from the zoning board.
So you notice in number two, it does...
Yep, I see what you're saying.
Yeah.
So what, what, rather than ask Susan specifically?
No, I'm just taking notes. I'm just taking notes and holding them back.
Offer a comment, we'll take notes, and we'll take them back to, to the ZBA to see what their intent was, but I, I don't want to choose an...
Yeah, just because I wasn't involved at all in the preparation of this, it came from the zoning board, so...
This would eliminate any confusion.
Yep.
For instance, if you finished the attic, it would have more square footage than before, but yet it would still meet the original dimensions. So you have to make sure what it includes and what it doesn't include.
Okay.
The other one, item three, I'm assuming what that means is, once you are now conforming, you lose all access to Section 6, and also all access to Hatfield.
The, you know, I, I'll, I'm going to let Emily speak to it, but I, you know, I think the intent here is to, you know, you're in this section because you've, for whatever reason, not utilized the building.
Right.
And I, I do think that there, there is kind of saying, listen, you've allowed this to happen to your property, for whatever the reasons are, there are going to be limitations on what you can do with it going forward. I do think that there, there is, um, that is kind of built into the intention of this provision, but again, the, I, I'm going to leave it to the zoning board to speak to exactly what their interpretation of this would be.
So if that is an interpretation, other parts of the zoning bylaw use words like Section 6, and they don't use the word Hatfield, but they refer to that section. If you referred to Hatfield, the section number, and Section 6 in this paragraph, there'd be no misunderstandings in the future, if that's the intention? If you follow what I'm saying?
Yes, I do.
Yeah.
Yep. Okay. Like I said, I, you know, well, Mary and I will both talk to Emily, but I, I think she'll probably go back and watch the tape as well, so she'll be able to...
I don't have it on my notes, but it brought up when Judy Sneath had mentioned, if a building burns down, there's a separate section. But if a building burns down, you don't act on it for two years. What would be the definition of the size, or what you could rebuild there?
No, well, then, now you're just left with a nonconforming lot in which you can not rebuild, you're left with a, and you need variances to do anything.
So my point is, if it's partially burned down, totally burned down, I think that should be clarified also. What condition it is that you get to rebuild?
And is it rebuilt? Your explanation of this kind of bringing it back to life just doesn't feel quite as clear.
But there's a difference, but there's a difference between destruction and just kind of letting it to kind of go to an un, you know, unmaintained state.
Yeah, unmaintained.
It's complete, that, those are completely different legal, legal contracts.
What I'm getting at is, we talk about, when we think of a house that's burned, it could be gutted, and that's all.
Right, but that's a casualty.
Right, but after two years, it's no longer a casualty. Yet the frame is still there.
No, I mean, right, but it doesn't matter if the frame's there, because the reason why, the reason why it's in the condition it's in is because of a casualty.
Yeah, so you lose it all.
You lose it all if you don't do anything.
Very good, thank you.
Thank you, Ben. All right, um, thanks for the comment and the discussion. It's, obviously, we need to circle back with, um, with Emily and the zoning board on their intent on some of these issues. Susan, thank you for your attempts to field questions, um, from everyone.
Yeah, no, I...
So I would make a motion that we...
Should have deferred earlier.
I would make a motion that we continue, um, discussion of abandonment discontinuance of nonconforming single-family, two-family dwellings to February 24th, 2020. Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All's in favor?
Aye.
All right. Next item on the agenda is Section 4-A and 4-B, which is lot coverage restrictions. The intent of this article is to set lot coverage restrictions for both buildings in Hardscape and residential zoning districts A, B, C, D, and E, or act on anything related there to. I will, uh, turn this over to Gary, as this was his proposal, and...
Phil, I'll just say, um, that for, um, current advisory committee review purposes, I believe this is now Article AAA.
This one, okay, this is AAA right now?
Yeah.
Okay, good, thank you.
Great, thanks, Phil. I, I just wanted to go back to, uh, the initial intent and, and approach relative to proposing this article. A lot of the feedback that I've been seeing in application reviews and feedback from, from... I just wanted to go back to the initial intent and approach relative to proposing this article. A lot of the feedback that I've been seeing in application reviews and feedback from, from residents, primarily in the northern areas of the town where the lots are smaller and the houses are getting very big, and they're very close to the lot lines, there was a consideration that perhaps we might look at, the issue of lot coverage. And the initial intent was to look at a balance of open space and structure. And in that, what I was trying to approach was a vehicle where we could identify in-plan, on the site, a proportional relationship in each one of the residence districts, with the exception of one that already has a percentage of coverage. So I think it's A, B, C, and E, that I had approached a certain percentage of coverage. Now, that was a two-dimensional area approach, or meth, or method, where one could say, for example, if you had a, in Residence District A, if the minimum lot size was 10,000 square feet, and you were to introduce a .25 as a proportion, you could build a 2,500-square-foot footprint on the site. In looking at that, relative to looking at a number of other peer towns, and looking at their methodologies, and looking at the issue of an interpretation of area versus massing, when I initially looked at the concept of lot coverage, I was always, as an architect, we always looked at floor-area ratio and lot coverage as being somewhat synonymous, but relative to looking at the specifics of the definitions, I understand that clearly lot coverage, when it looks at area, is different than lot coverage when it looks at floor-area ratio. And floor-area ratio would further look at this concept or this method and say, if, for example, in Residence District A, just for example, because it's the math, it's easy on 10,000, if one were to say, to try to introduce a massing or a bulk proportion, one would say, and let's say it was .25, that would mean that you could build a 2,500-square-foot house on 10,000 square feet of land. That's a different methodology than looking at a plan area. Now, going back to the initial concept of trying to increase the balance of open space, because in looking at a number of areas in Hingham's bylaw development over the years, we have typically increased in the bylaw, and just, just to go back just for a minute, the fact that we have a bylaw means that we have certain restrictions on all private property in the town. So there's always a balance between property rights and the bylaw. The bylaw is there to set up a methodology so the common good is maintained, but also I really think it's very important relative to protecting the rights of the abutters. So in looking at this further, in looking at other peer towns, I realize that, in our bylaw, as it's evolved, we have increased setbacks over time. We have increased the proportion over time of the open space on a parcel relative to the building. That's been the general intent, we've done it differently in certain, different setbacks relative to different lot sizes. And so what that basically set up with the, a series of horizontal dimensions, again, controlling plan area coverage on a lot, we set up a certain density factor. We also have another constraint, which is the height requirement typically in a residential district, is two and a half stories or 35 feet. So between the plan area and the height, we have a certain sense of massing. Now, one of the things that, in doing further research on this that I, that I was looking at, is that we have a situation where we also have another aspect, another requirement in the bylaw, the Hatfield Amendment, which was passed in 1984, which basically is a byright provision, which allows a person to develop to the setbacks that were in place when the lot was legally permitted under the bylaw in effect at that time, when the building was built. Now, the parameters of that control relative to plan area management on a site, is that the linear dimension, is what's listed in the, what's written in the bylaw, the linear dimensions control. And so I was looking at this, this concept, and I was thinking, there are a couple of areas that would need, this is much more complex, I think, than meets the eye, and I was looking at a couple of areas. For example, if you have a, a balance of open space in, to building, relationship or proportion, and it's all indexed into the size of the lot, because the whole bylaw is indexed into the size of the lot, and you had a 25% plan coverage, if you had a 25,000-square-foot lot, you could have a building that's very big, and if you had a 5,000-square-foot lot next door, you could have a building that's very small, and it doesn't, the balance, it doesn't really, really go to the intent of the goal, which is to maintain a balance in the neighborhoods of open space to building. And I think a couple of reasons also why this, this came up initially is, is that what we're seeing in the densification of the development of the town, is I think we're losing a lot of the natural environment, and when we lose a lot of the natural environment, we're losing the habitat, we're losing all the things that, when I think of a small town, I'd like to still maintain. But, so it got to the, in looking at this, and also Hingham's unique because it has Hatfield, I thought that maybe, maybe the, in order to pursue this, one would have to expand its scope to basically have a more comprehensive review of the other constraints that impact open space and building on lots in the town. And that would range from an analysis, and this came from commentary that came from folks who spoke at the last hearing, I said, very good commentary, where one needed to do an, an analysis of the patterns of, you know, for example, in Residence District A, you have lots that are 2,000 square feet, you have some that are 5,000, you have some that are 10, you have some that are 20. How do you deal with the smaller lots? That's really key, relative to settings. You can't really set a consist, or a typical percentage based on the required lot size in the district. You have to basically have, I think other towns have shown this in the research, is you have to have a sliding percentage. So on a 5,000-square-foot lot, it's a different lot coverage percentage than it is on a 20,000-square-foot lot in Residence A. You know, where the minimum, as specified by right or conforming, is the 10,000. So in looking how other peer towns have done this, they have a very detailed methodology here that's been worked out over time in some very careful discussions. And I looked at Needham, I looked at Brookline, I looked at Cohasset, I looked at Norwell, I looked at Situate, and I looked at Concord, I looked at Lincoln, I looked at Lexington. And there's a very complex, each town is somewhat unique, but Concord's very similar to us, and Cohasset's very similar to us in terms of their thinking. Now, in Cohasset, what they do in terms of this, in terms of this methodology, is they have a large house design review bylaw, which means if you have a house that's of a certain size, minimum size, which is typically, I think it's 4,000 square feet, I'm not, there's a design review. It's not the color of the windows and the doors and the architectural style, it's the massing, it's the bulk, it's how it relates to the neighbors. The feedback I got from folks there, and in Norwell, was that some people thought it was great, some people didn't think it was so great. So there's mixed reactions, and I can see both sides. So make a long story short, I just thought that given the complexity of what was, what this problem would demand in terms of a objective kind of an analysis, is that it was more than what we might have time and resource to deal with this year. And so I was thinking that, in that respect, I was thinking of maybe it would make more sense to maybe not pursue it this year and maybe pursue it next year. I just, given how much time we have between now and town meeting, and the research that I've seen that would need to be done to develop something that was defensible, and, you know, in the town, to me, is longer than we have.
And explainable.
And explain it, yes, explain it's half of it.
If you're talking about a formula that complex, trying to get everybody up to speed on that, I think would be a lift.
All right, so I, did I hear a motion to withdraw?
Yeah, I would make a motion that we withdraw, if, if that was the board's, you know, thought.
Then I would entertain a motion to, but first of all, thank you for your work and for advancing this question. I think it was, it was helpful in next year, bring it back around, around again. So thank you, Gary, for that. With that, then, I would make a motion that we withdraw Section V-A and V-B Lot Coverage Restrictions, also known as Article AAA. Is there a second?
Second.
Need further discussion? All's in favor?
Aye.
All right, bring us to the next item on the agenda, which is Site Plan Review. This is known as Article AAA. The intent of this article is to make minor, sorry, proposed article AAA. The intent of this article is to make minor corrections and add clarifying language in Section I-I into a meant Section 4-B.6. B, delete the existing text and insert, quote, "All projects that, one, create a land disturbance or an alteration of drainage patterns over an area greater than 5,000 square feet or two, create a land disturbance of more than 1,000 square feet in areas with slopes greater than 10%, which lowers the threshold of disturbance that triggers site plan review, or act on anything related thereto." So with that, then, do you want me to, I guess I'll turn it over to you, Susan, for any comments you have, or?
Oh, yeah, so the, the comments that I made to the original bylaw, I mean, proposed amendment, there was one in here, just to change a word from not capitalized to being capitalized, but I discussed that with John Cofflin, and that is not a substantive change to the bylaw, and is something that's just, can get fixed in the next printing of the bylaw. So it was suggested that that could, Item 2 could come out. Other than that, I, there was, there was a correction in Item 1, just a reference, a section reference. Some of the other changes were just putting it into motion form. So for example, it's now no, you know, once, the article's going to be in the warrant the way it was submitted by the planning board, so now what the board would be voting to recommend would be the form of motion. So like, it's mostly, as you can see, form-type comments, as opposed to substantive comments, because at this point, it's just a policy question. Mary did, what's not reflected in my markup is that, Mary, after I get this discussion at the original hearing, had inserted language that the board has discussed in the past about potentially creating a limited site plan review process, but that was very substantive, and I did have a conversation with John Cofflin about it. And the concern is that it's, you know, if, if you advertise for changing the thresholds for site plan review under this section, so something that, maybe if you decided to change those thresholds, that would all be within the scope, because that was what was advertised. Whereas the limited site plan review is a process, a procedural change, which was not advertised, and there was concern about that being within the scope. So I did not, I put that in my email, and I had discussed it with Mary last week after I spoke to John, but that is, that is why at least my markup doesn't reflect the, any changes regarding limited site plan review.
Mary, do you want to add any, any comments as well?
Yeah, so when we left last time, the board asked for some limited site plan review provisions, and at, because council says that, in their opinion, it's outside of the scope. If you were to try to get it reinserted this year, you've done it before, you have to ask the selectmen to open the warrant and insert the language, and then they would refer it back to you. You would have to advertise another public hearing. When you start looking at the calendar and how long it would take to get all of that to be done, you couldn't even have your advertised hearing until March 16th. I think advisory is hoping to be done with their articles on March 5th. So it's, it's kind of a logistics crunch there, which would be challenging, so although you have that option theoretically available to you, it, it doesn't really seem realistic. We do have that language, and certainly whether staff chooses, or the board chooses next year to advance limited site plan review in your bylaw, or to make a minor change to your bylaw and have limited site plan review in your administrative procedures, you do have two options to proceed with that, but that wouldn't be until next year. So we've got the language, good news is, we have the language.
We've got the language.
And it will be, still be there for you next year. But the bad news is, is that it's kind of off the table for this year, and we're within the boundaries of what we've discussed about changing the thresholds for site plan review. I do want to just point out a couple other layout items that I emailed to the board, and they should be lying out in front of you. You have a letter from the chief of police expressing his support, and he very articulately talks about some of the challenges that he faces and Public Works faces. I didn't get an updated letter of support from DPW. I think that it's just a, not reflective of a lack of support, it's more reflective of capacity at this point. I did also lay out for you an updated map, and I won't spend the same amount of time talking about it as we did at the last meeting. I heard that Judy watched it, and this board all went through it. This is a map showing you parcels by area, and I do have the same map up on the board over there. And what I just want to point out for the board is that, again, this is looking at the town as if it were flat as a pancake, and you're thinking about site plan review and the thresholds. And if you look at the, the numbers, we added a few more cohorts for you down in the index. So you can see that under 5,000 square feet, there's 204 parcels, under 7,499 square feet, there's cumulatively 650 parcels, and so the numbers in parentheses are not cumulative, they're, you know, correlate directly to that cohort. But the point that I'm trying to illustrate to this board with this map is a couple of things. One is, last year, this board was concerned that changing the thresholds for site plan review would disproportionately impact one portion of the town. I think this map actually is very informative, that it shows you that there's lots of various sizes throughout town. I also will just reiterate that if we're talking just about, you know, the whole flat as a pancake town, parcels under 20,000 square feet, and, and for the purposes of the site plan review thresholds, really, the projects that the board is, and, and staff are wrestling with are really the demo and rebuild. And most of those projects basically massage the entire landscape, property line to property line. So when I looked at this map, and I said, okay, under 20,000 square feet, if you had a property line to property line changed to the site, all these properties that are colored, if they were residential, they wouldn't trigger your site plan review theoretically under our site, flat as a pancake. And I found that very informative, because this is approximately 39% of the parcels in town. We don't have an exceptional topography layer in the GIS. I was talking with my colleagues, and we feel that, you know, certainly up in north Hingham, you do have topography, and also down by World's End, if you look at like Guilford and Elmore, down there, there's some, some steep slopes. Obviously, there's some throughout town, but not great big concentrations. So these are the, the properties that theoretically, if they were coming in to do a demo and rebuild, may not have the benefit of site plan review. Again, just briefly for the board, why does staff feel that these projects would benefit from oversight prior to construction instead of after construction? Because we'd like to mitigate any potential impacts from drainage and erosion and sedimentation before they happen. And the best tool that we have to intervene to do that is with a permit process, site plan review prior to construction, where our peer review engineer and our professional staff and the board can provide comments and direction. So that was what this map is intended to show you. And I believe as far as layout, I mean, I did provide to you the updated language for the limited site plan review and track changes, as we've discussed, that would come back out. We do also have a suggestion, and we've talked about it, staff, and with Susan, too. We do also have a suggestion, and we've talked about it, staff, and with Susan too, whether or not it would be instructive. Remember last year, we had a chart with a list of properties by address that were problems? And we did have some pictures, and I didn't put them back out in front of you this year, because we discussed last year whether we were picking on particular projects. But it may be informative to have some pictures of some of the impacts that we're trying to address. You know, and that may help advisory. I know Susan's commented on it, we've talked about it.
And I do, I have, and I, I can send it to Mary to distribute it without giving an address, so we're not calling anyone out. But, I just look at what's going on around the detention basin on this reconstruction. It's basically a mud pit.
Is that the one I saw?
A mud pit worm, actually.
Yeah.
It's become.
You can pass, or you can show it to the... I mean, and right now, and it's, it's not as if, they right now are not violating any regulations in the town.
Correct.
So, it's not as if, oh, we're calling them out because they're being bad actors. That contractor is not violating any bylaw of the town. And basically, it's a mud pit around our stormwater drainage system, which the town is required, under the new MS4 federal regulations, to, to protect. To keep clean. So, because there's no regulations to capture that, all of the taxpayers will end up down the road, being responsible for cleaning up the mess of a cumulative number of those projects that are happening on the smaller lots. So, it's a policy decision for the town, and the board, and the advisory committee, and the voters at town meeting, as long as everybody understands that it will cost the town, at some point, a lot, a lot more money for the town overall, to fix this problem, than it will call, cost individual own, homeowners or property owners to prevent it from happening. So, that's the trade-off.
Well, and, and to that end, very well said, where do our storm drains discharge into our resource areas? So, there's also the potential for, not just the current, you know, we may need more staff, or more intensive maintenance. But the town could be fined, right? And that, that becomes very adversarial. So, this proposal is to shift the costs related to ensuring proper design and prevention of impacts onto the property owner, instead of the town as a whole. We feel that staff and the board does a very good job about waiving provisions that aren't necessarily indicated for some of these projects. Not every project is, you know, built alike. And I think that internally, my colleagues and I work very well with the applicants, as far as guiding them. So, I feel that, I don't feel that it would be overly onerous. And I also think that, for the board, if you choose to move forward with this, you could actually, with staff, we could track your permitting experiences this year, with, you know, some data points, you know, size of disturbance, size of lot, what sections were waived, what level of intervention, how many meetings. Because I think for the board, a little beyond the scope of this year's article, but for you to think about for, for maybe next year, or future year, is for the board to find that sweet spot of what projects are you comfortable delegating to staff to work with peer review and the building commissioner, to try to manage where the silt fence goes and what happens? And what projects, where is that breaking point where you say, you know, from this point on, we feel this really needs to come before the board? Barring any, you know, dramatic things like violations or big problems, which automatically come to the board. So, that, that would be staff's perspective. I think that, we've talked about this for several years. We have so many of those projects going on in town, and very, very little leverage for us to do anything about it. And right now, our, our 20,000 square feet, it, you know, it's very easy to work around. And it's typically in these smaller, established neighborhoods, where we have the biggest impacts on the residents, from construction vehicles, from dirt in the roadway, even just disruption. So, when we have site plan review, and, and this board looks at erosion control, and you look at stormwater, another benefit of that permitting process is that the police chief gets looped in. And he connects with the builder, and they determine if they need police details. And there's a lot of internal communication that really is coordinated through that process, that sometimes may not be triggered, until there's a problem, or a complaint.
Well, thank you. I, I think, subject to any questions, I think we're probably ready to vote on this tonight. But let me see if anybody, we've been talking about this for a while. Do you have any questions or concerns?
So, what, what is, what is the process for amending our administrative procedures?
Well, so, the administrative procedures, you have the right to create them. You would vote those at a meeting. I did give you a draft, but it's not ready. It needs to be revised. I gave it to you for something to think about. But right now, your administrative procedures would only cover the potential waivers of site plan review for non-residential improvements that are purely interior. They're defined on your, in your bylaw.
No, but I'm, I'm going back, and I'll, I'll be quick about this, I promise. The, the, the reason you went to all the effort to draft those, the, the guidelines in here and the procedures, was to address the concerns that, that we had, both the, the potential onerousness on, on a whole bunch of residents. The potential for a lot of people, whether by accident or not, started and went on with the project, and were, were identified after the fact, in which case, they're definitely coming before us, right? And the volume of, of these projects that may be coming before the board. And so, we wanted to create that mechanism that was both good for the board, but also good for the, for the residents. And so, I'm just trying to figure out, if, absent that, if we just make these changes, then, then all of that is still, I would say, in play. And so, I'm just trying to figure out how we can achieve what we want to achieve on both sides, without having to wait a year.
Well, so you kind of can't, but, well...
I mean, Gordon, you still have the ability, under 5A, to waive submittal requirements. So, they would still have to apply to the board. But if Mary reviewed it, and said, okay, well, it looks like really the, it's gonna be an issue just during construction, that we need to make sure we're not getting mud dumping into the vents, and otherwise, the way they've designed it, it'll look like it'll be okay, then the application can come into the board with just a limited, rather than for A through K. Maybe they only need it on making this up, A and, you know, A and B, or whatever, I'm just making that up. Then, you know, they can come in with, hey, we're just coming in with this, because this will address the issue, and we're asking to waive everything else. So, they're not bound by submitting a photometric plan, if all we're talking about is that. They can come in and ask for waivers of everything else.
Well, they do that now, so...
Right.
They do that now.
So, we...
That's not any different than what we have now.
But the, how would the limited site plan review, isn't it limiting what they have to submit?
Correct, but it also...
It's administrative.
Well, just a couple things. Let me just back up a couple of steps.
Yeah.
Okay. First of all, how do you amend your administrative procedures? You didn't adopt any yet, but you can adopt them, and you would adopt them at a meeting. The limited site plan review parameters were proposed. First of all, I didn't write them, they were language that were drafted last year. I think Susan drafted them with staff, but, so I don't want you to think that I just wrote those this year and put them in there. We saved them.
I wasn't suggesting what were you...
Well, no, but I just want to, you know, let's just be...
The words themselves were elegant. I didn't mean to...
Just one right here.
So, this limited site plan review talks about, if you read it through, it talks about how an applicant worked, if you choose to, can work directly with staff. And it wouldn't even come to you, right? So, the applicant could meet with staff. If the scope of it is minor, staff may secure a peer review. But we would do all of that outside of the board's purview. And if the applicant was happy, happy, you know, they didn't have a problem, we didn't have a problem, it might be handled completely out of your purview.
Sure. But with administrative updates to us, as we talk about...
Administrative updates, but it wouldn't come in beyond your agenda.
You notify us each time that you have that comment.
Right. With the caveat that, if something came in, I mean, there's some projects that, you know, staff's been around long enough that you can tell by looking at a project, no, not it, this...
This, this staff, yes.
This is beyond staff's scope, this goes to the board. There's other things where it might be a great deal of disturbance, but a completely flat lot, and staff might go out and see it and, and understand that if perimeter erosion controls and a tracking pad were put in, notwithstanding the fact that it sounded like a lot of disturbance, it really wasn't a big project. But that language, right now, we can't insert here. I will, without confusing things too much, say that this limited site plan review language is proposed right now in the bylaw. The alternative, which I will write up, so that we all remember it next year, is that if you wanted to, under C on page 10, include subsection, not just 5B1, but 5B2, where it talks about the modifications of the site, which do not materially or adversely affect conditions, you might be able to put some of this limited site plan review language in your administrative rules. And then, it's just easier for the board to amend it, if you determine that you want to change the parameters of what is in staff's purview, what's in the board's purview. And that may be the best way to go, depending on legal review next year. It just depends on the board's flexibility, and whether you need to go to town meeting to change it or not. But we're not really there, right now. Right now, what Susan's talking about, we pretty much already do. An applicant will come in, you know, administrative rules, you could adopt those, and then staff could deal with the internal renovation waivers, should you choose to sign off on that. That could come off your agenda. For these other kind of minor site plan reviews that you see, for the demo and reconstruction, we just had another one today. The building department said, I think you're gonna need site plan review, please call the planning board. The applicant called me, we had a conversation about the scope of their project. I said, yes, it does appear that you'll trigger site plan review, unless you can give me something that demonstrates you don't. And so, we agreed that they did. And then I went through the application process with them, and I said, for this project, the board is primarily gonna be interested in impact on neighbors, drainage, and erosion control. So, they typically will consider broad waivers of these other submittal requirements. So, when you submit your application, you should request waivers or partial waivers of the site plan review, submittal requirements. And so, we're helping people with that now. We're not just having them submit this massive $20,000 site plan review set. Some sites require extensive drainage analysis. That's just the nature of the beast. Some of them don't. If there's projects that on their face don't appear to require a massive drainage analysis, what I've been doing is encouraging people to submit a drainage statement, and enough of an analysis to demonstrate that they're complying with the stormwater standards, and ask for a partial waiver of the submittal requirements. And what our peer review engineers do that are looking at these, they'll opine on the amount of material provided, and then they'll say, you know, can you just expand? Tell me the contributory watershed, or, you know, give me this data point, give me that data point. So, those demo and reconstructions are not being put through the rigor, potentially, of an analysis that an industrial park would, provided that we have enough information for the peer review engineer to look at the board, and advise you as to whether they still comply with the stormwater standards, and they meet the requirements for erosion and sediment control. But we're kind of doing that now, just as an advisory basis. Those people still have to come to you. And that's what the limited site plan review could theoretically modify, some of those really minor projects. This year, though, should you change these thresholds, you will receive more projects for you to review. Staff will continue to do as much work as we can upfront. So, then, when it gets to you, kind of the technical wrinkles are identified, either called out for you to take a position on, or resolved the way that they should be. And it gets to you to look at the bigger issues. And I can't, you know, because of the scope issue, we can't really address that, I don't think.
This year.
That's outside, yeah.
You advertise for site plan review thresholds, and not for a site plan review process?
I completely agree. I mean, it is a, because it's a process, right? It's not just saying, here's what triggers you to go talk to Mary. It's, okay, and once you go talk to Mary, here's how it's gonna be. And it's different than how it is now. So, I completely agree with that.
So, I guess the question I've got for the board is, knowing that we can't address the review process, are people comfortable with it? I mean, you made, you raised a great point about, and that was a concern last year. Certainly, Mary's comments, you know, give me confidence that this is, this was gonna work, and it does address the problem. But if there's concern about the scope, we could always not act on it, and move it to next year. I just, I'm okay with it.
Do you have a sense from Mike, how many applications he gets that could trigger it?
I don't. We do about eight to 10 demo and rebuilds a year. Right now, they don't all trigger site plan review. You know, some of these other things that are causing the erosion problems, they could just be in addition. I mean, they're not all demo and rebuilds. Construction activity is high.
Especially with these thresholds.
Correct. You know, so I don't have an estimate. I suspect it, you know, it just varies.
But it sounds to me like, you feel like it's manageable, that we already have a process for, kind of, abbreviating site plan or review for applicants of a certain type. And I think that's the type that we're talking about here. And that the benefit of requiring a drainage analysis at a lower threshold outweighs the administrative handling of it that might happen.
Well...
Is that what you're saying?
I am. I mean, it will still come to you for a vote, and there will be items for this board to opine on and take a position on. You may have some of these projects where there is neighbor concerns, obviously, and I don't handle that. I do feel that this is necessary for the town. I do, from the staff perspective, see the impact it has on public safety, and on the drainage system. And I do feel comfortable with providing guidance to the applicants with regard to... I mean, I can tell pretty easily, when these projects come in, you know, what's indicated and what's, and have a pretty good sense of what level of effort they're gonna be required to put in. Right? So, it's pretty transparent to me. It's really board's preference. You could either do nothing this year again, and wait another year, and then do it all. Or you could take a step this year, and say, okay, we're gonna take a deep breath, and we're gonna take, you know, do it this year, and see what our experience is, and help that inform how we edit the limited site plan review next year. I do feel that this board will ultimately need to delegate some of the minor, you know, projects to staff to work on with the peer review engineer, because you have larger projects, and then just planning work to do. So, it's finding, like I said, that sweet spot, where you're not bogged down in it, but where you're still litigating the broader substantive projects that wouldn't be staff's role to litigate, right? We need to define that. Where does it go from construction management to elected official?
And, and I don't want my questions to be construed that I, I'm not in favor of the merits of the changes. I absolutely am. I, it just, it's, it's a, a volume and impact issue, right? Because lots of additions are gonna trigger this, right? If you're talking about just general disturbance, right? And you raised the, the neighbor concerns, right? The neighbors are going to be at least concerned about us, if those things are being handled purely administratively, right? Then, that, that becomes an issue, you know, as, as elected members of the board. So, I just, the, the more, the, the sooner we can be clear about what that process is, so everybody knows, and we do that either administratively, or as, you know, as swiftly at next year's town meeting as we can, I think that that's great. But I'm not suggesting we don't do it this year, simply because that's not in place.
So, the only administrative change we can make this year, as far as adopting administrative rules, as far as I understand, is for you to shift that 5B1, the internal renovations that don't ha- change, do not include a change of use, or parking demand, for which a special permit A2 or A3 is required. Those are those ones that you do at the start of the meeting for tenant fit up at Derby Street Shop, those types. Those are those ones that you do at the start of the meeting for tenant fit up at Derby Street Shop, those types of things. Those are the things that you could now, not tonight, but...
Those are among the least burdensome things that we do as well.
Correct.
But those are in a category that doesn't really impact or affect what the voters wanted, what, what the voters want the board and expect the board to do. So I'm thinking that if it's a, if it's a road or it's a, it's a pretty straightforward quantitative, you know, decision relative to, yeah, it's an interior renovation, clearly the bylaw says that it doesn't trigger the site plan review, that's administrative to me. But when it comes down to an interpretive or a review of however big or small the project is, I think it still should be in front of the board.
Well, the other thing I would note is that site plan review with a building permit doesn't, is not a public hearing that requires notice of the abutters. So it's an administrative review by the board just to make sure that compliance. So it's not like someone has to go out and get a special permit and 20 of their neighbors are going to show up. It's, it's just a, it's just a public meeting, it's not a public hearing.
And I don't do a lot of this.
It's the same as if it was the interior fit out on Derby Street Shops, it's that same level of review. It's not a full-blown hearing.
I guess my suggestion would be then, based on what I'm hearing, is we, we vote to advance the merits of this article, and then next year the board have everything come to it and decide.
Yes, we're just going to, we're going to live with it for a year and see what it's like.
Decide the threshold for delegation or not.
I, I think that's, I think that's right. I think the next year's board is going to live with that and figure it out and see what it's like and then...
And then decide, hey, this is, this is the cutoff point? This is what we still want to see, what we don't want to see?
Yeah, I would add to that, that I'd be curious, I mean, the homeowner cost, I mean, what kind of additional cost are we pushing on homeowners to do what they might see as something they should have had by right, or they should have been able to do, or they were able to do in the past? I mean, I'm not saying this is not a reason not to do this, but some concern that this becomes a much more expensive process for people because of the need to pay for our independent analysis, you know, even if it's on the limited site plan review, there's still a substantial cost to that. I mean, I don't actually have no clue what it is, but I would imagine it's in hundreds of dollars an hour to have our engineer or someone review what might be a plan that can be handled administratively, quote-unquote, you know, or limited site plan review. Just some sensitivity to that, some thought about that. Because i- if we're increasing the average cost of the addition by five, six, seven, two, three percent, whatever the number is, that's not inconsequential.
I raised that point last year.
And I, I, that personally troubles me, I mean, I think that that's problematic. I mean, it just makes this town more expensive to live in, it makes it more expensive to be here and just be a part of this place if it costs you more to do work on your property. So I, I do, I have concerns about that. I mean, you know, again, I, the spirit of this works for me, but I think we need to consider that as part of what we do for limited site plan review and whether or not we can help people shed some of those costs in, in going through that process.
So I, that, that's a good point, and I raised that point last year. So I guess practically speaking, it would be, the applicant would then, this provision would get triggered. The applicant then would be told, "Get an engineer to tell us that what you're doing is not going to impact the drainage."
Or the contractor can.
Other, or contractor could do it.
So frequently, so if it's a demo and rebuild, there already is an engineer involved.
Well, and, but, right. And the, the cost differential on a demo and rebuild is going to be relatively minor, is the point as you've made repeatedly. But if it's a, if it's a small addition, but, you know, the trucks and tractors have to go all the way around the house, and so the overall disturbance becomes more than 5,000 square feet, and it's a relatively small addition, we've triggered it and now they're going to have to do a bunch of that. Now, I will say, I think for the first year, we're also going to have to be pretty flexible, because a lot of people are going to have no idea that they're triggering this, thinking that they're just building a small addition, right? So while the sort of community understanding of the change kind of takes hold, I think we're going to have to be pretty flexible on that review and, and what we require.
So I think if it's a small addition, the trucks going around the house would not trigger a site plan review. It's really, you know, driving a truck in the grass, that wouldn't necessarily trigger it. But if it's, if, if you're picturing a small addition, someone's putting a sunroom on their house, probably the scope of that conversation is going to be taking a look at the site, is it flat or is it not flat? Are there gutters? Are the gutters going into dry wells? Is there perimeter control? Do you have silt fence? And, you know, really, a lot of that conversation is also just talking to the contractor about the need to get the vegetation reestablished as quickly as possible, and "Please keep the silt fence up until the grass is growing." Gee, there's a catch basin right at the bottom of the driveway. You need to put a silt sack in there. If you're not sure how to do it, or if it's in the public way, you need to talk to DPW about that, but we want to make sure there's no dirt in there. I mean, not every project is the same, right? That's a different scope of conversation with the contractor versus an engineer, for example. It's, it's pretty nuanced. It's, for staff, it's just basically saying, instead of there having a, be a complete absence of conversation until there's a problem. It's about saying, "Let's have this conversation at the start so we can kind of discuss this and help guide you." Yes, there are sometimes some costs. A demo and reconstruction that we just had peer reviewed recently, it came to three of your meetings. I think the peer review cost was $1,100, and that was a pretty complex drainage analysis.
The one that was voted at this la, at the January 6th meeting?
A couple meetings ago, yeah.
I think one of the things we're going to find is, is that the, you know, that if we're increasing the impervious aspects of the buildings or the hardscape relative to the size of the lot, and we're minimizing the pervious area of the lot to a significant degree, and if we have some grades involved or not, I think those are the, those are the site plan applications that have really triggered this, because they, that's runoff into the neighbors, it's runoff into the storm system in the street, it's the mud patch that we saw in the photo.
It's like House Street.
Right, yeah. And, and so I think it's not a function of size, it's a function of the ratio of pervious to impervious and intervention. So that's a judgment call.
Again, and again,
That would be more on a peer review.
It's a trade-off of, should all of the residents end up paying for some portion because, because, rather than the homeowner's making the decision to modify their house.
No, but it's,
That's what the trade, because when there's problems with the,
Susan, I'm not, I'm not disputing that. This is not a binary conversation, right? I agree on the merits, I'm just trying to figure out what protections we have for everybody else.
Right, I'm just saying all the, all the various different factors that weigh out, because it's not always just, then the storm dorens will have to be cleaned. When there becomes an issue between neighbors, and then there are enforcement actions brought in, and I get involved, or Carrie Ryan gets involved, then we're talking thousands and thousands of dollars. So, you know what I mean? I'm saying that there's, there's all, there's all different kind of policy considerations for that, you know, kind of, you know, our bigger picture that for kind of all of the decision makers to take into account.
And I do, I will respectfully, you know, Gordon's point is duly noted.
Yeah.
It will have an impact on workload, and the board's next opportunity to change that will be next town meeting. So should you choose to advance this this year, yes, it will.
Do you want to try to get a better handle on how much it will increase your workload before we vote on it?
I'm comfortable with handling these conversations, but it will affect your agendas. You know, I, I feel like I'm here and I work for the town and I'm busy. That's, you know, I mean, and we, we get the work done.
That, that is objectively true.
But I'm not going to sit here and tell you not to do something that's needed to be done because I'm worried about work, you know, on, on my part.
All right, let's take any public comment on this article, proposed article. Ben Wolcox.
Ben Wolcox, Green Street. On these, I've spoken to Mary at length about this, and I'm very confident in her ability to do the administrative work. I'd like to see it in writing, at least, what is going to be relief is available. Always be Mary, there may be, uh, sitting in that position. This is a problem we had with zoning quite often, where the zoning board of appeals has a certain interpretation, it was never the intention of when the planning board submitted it. Can't rely on just one person, as much as I love meeting you, Mary, you know. It just, the other one is, it appears you can't change the limited site plan review, without changing the scope.
No, it's,
Not, not this year, yeah, that's right.
It's been opined that it's a, would increase the scope.
Yeah. So I'd like to see at least something in writing before this goes through, one way or another.
Thank you. McElany.
Andy McElany, 26 Myers Farm Road. I'm wondering if during the year, and obviously I haven't thought this through as few folks have, but I wonder if, if during the first year, when you're looking to see in part what the impact of a change would be, well, there's a way of writing this so that you could, you would require someone who meets the new guidelines to come to the planning board to discuss whether a site plan review is deemed necessary by the staff without requiring a site plan review in every instance, in the first instance. I don't know how you would write that or if you could do it, but you, you, you get my sense of, yeah, trying to accomplish.
Develop the policy based on the practice.
But the, the board does that, even, even with applicants that are, most of the time, it's applicants who are kind of say, "Okay, we're going to come in with this big project. What are things that the board would be concerned about us," right? So you have, unlike the zoning board, the planning board does hold and can hold kind of informal discussion. An applicant can, or potential applicant can come in and say, "This is what we're proposing, what do you think we're going to need?" I mean, that's, right, you've done that before. So I do think, even without writing into the bylaw, someone could come in, if, you know, if it fit on the agenda, for 15 minutes and kind of show them and get a sense.
But it's got to, to understand what the question is, if, if the board does, are you assuming the board does change the thresholds or does not?
Assuming that the board changes the thresholds.
So if the board changes the threshold, if I understand the question, it's, if somebody triggers it, is triggered by the thresholds, can that somebody then come to this board and talk about if a site plan review is necessary or not? And what I would say to you is, once they're already here, they're already kind of doing the site plan review with the board. Right, that's what the discussion is, right? Like, "I'm doing this little project."
Yeah, yeah.
Right, how, how big of a conversation are we going to have?
And how much do they have to pay for it?
You know, and, and really, a lot of the times, it changes from project to project, and staff will give their best, you know, suggestions to the board to consider.
I, I guess what I was, as I'm saying, thinking, I'm concerned about cost, as Kevin said, of high, as soon as you start hiring a, a professional, the cost is fairly significantly increased. And the second is, if, if the site plan review is required, what happens if the neighbor objects to the waiver?
It's not a public hearing.
It's not a public hearing.
So I would say, I would just suggest that mere discussion of the cost of figuring out the right design is not necessarily a reason to not design something so that doesn't impact the neighbors of the town. That's just a perspective, and I don't vote. But site plan reviews are not duly noticed public hearings. I typically don't even do courtesy abutter notices on them unless it comes out of a flagrant violation issue where everyone's already actively involved. Otherwise, I don't do site plan review notices, they're just on the agenda. So it's not one of those things where people will come in and object to site plan review when we have neighbors come in about site plan review, it's when they're already having a problem.
And the other thing to remember is, under Massachusetts state law, case law, it is the, it's almost impossible to deny site plan review. You can only deny site plan review if the submittals that are required, like the information, they just refuse to provide the information, or the site plan presents a problem that is so intractable that there is no resolution of it that can be found to resolve the problem. So under all the case law regarding site plan review, it is virtually impossible to deny site plan review. All you could do is impose conditions to try to mitigate a problem. So if a site plan was going to come in and saying, "Okay, look, it looks like all your water is going to run off and land in your neighbor's backyard, so you have to put in a drain or something or capture the water," they could put that condition in there. But it's not all it would end up is, is conditions to try to, to
Mitigate.
mitigate the negative impact. It couldn't be, "Oh, you can't build your house or build your addition." It would be nearly impossible for the board to legally deny a site plan approval.
Plus, on some of these really small lots, we do need the benefit of a narrow scope peer review, because what typically happens is there's underground infiltration chambers that have to be put in, and they have to be bedded in gravel, and you have to make sure that the substrate is permeable enough so that you're not just creating a problem. So when you want to increase the intensity of development or redevelop or one of these properties in town, unless you're lucky enough to have a very flat parcel on Main Street, you may be constrained by ledge or slope or just available land. And those are the things that don't have the benefit of an engineered review. You have a contractor coming in, building the biggest house they can, which is fine, that's what their client wants, but they're not thinking about the downspouts and the drainage, and but-for spending arguably a little more money to make sure that it's designed appropriately to meet state standards, they won't. And then it comes to this board after the fact, when the building commissioner gets complaints, and it costs a lot more money to try to remedy it after the fact, both with angst and aggravation, and there's maybe not any more available land to build it, the septic system's already been placed, et cetera, so, I mean...
I have, I have no quarrels with the objects that are to be addressed here, nor of imposing the burden on the person who's creating the problem. I, I'm more concerned about the, the very minor landscaping type situation. I mean, if you had a, a thousand square feet on a 10% slope, if you wanted to tear down some shrubs and replace them, you know, a thousand square feet's not a lot. And, and, you know, shrubs are expensive enough if you have to. I'm just concerned about that situation where it's,
Correct.
that the, the, the drainage isn't going to be affected. It's really the situation I'm concerned with. But the drainage won't really be, be affected, so it's not going to be a problem. Is, is the landowner still going to be required to add an additional expense?
But if you strip the vegetation off of a slope, then the drainage, how the water hits the ground may not be affected, but that catch basin in the street at the bottom of the hill is going to be affected because all that sediment is going to wash down that hill into the river, into the basin.
What I'm thinking actually is a, a neighbor who had some white pines taken out, and when he did, his, the next door neighbor, after consulting with him, put up a bunch of arbrevite. So the drainage wasn't affected. And it, but it was on a, a, a small slope on the, the length of the, the boundary. Is that, I don't think the drainage is affected at all there.
That probably wouldn't have even risen to the level of getting a peer review. It would have needed to have silt fence put around it. And the board, in the current, the way the regulation is currently written, that person would come before the board with the sketch of what the project is, have a conversation with the board, seek waivers, and the board would likely grant broad waivers if it was landscaping along a, a shared property line. I mean, this board evaluates every project differently. They don't ju, you know what I mean? They evaluate it on the merits.
Yeah.
But something like that certainly is something to think about under limited site plan review, that, that may not need to come to you.
Establish a series of categories, if it's basically looking at the natural environment and the impervious nature of the, of the lot is not changed, seems to me that's a quantitative issue in a quantitative review. But if you're introducing structures, you're introducing sheet flow elements, driveways, pavement, roof, anything like that, that collects the water in a different way and centralizes it in terms of its discharge, then I think we have, that's a whole different area of review. The other thing I would suggest is, as an architect, basically, when I do a project, basically, I have not only the building, but the site plan and all the engineering and all the surveying is all part of that submission, which then, hopefully, if it's done correctly and you're working with the right constraints, clearly then the peer review process is much more straightforward. Yes, there might be different ways of looking at a drainage system. You might want a French drain, you might want to do a trench drain, something like that, depending upon the, you know, the intervention on the property. But it seems to me that, that the But it seems to me that, that the current professional design process would help mitigate a lot of these issues too. You know, we could ask for, in the submissions, before we even get to peer review, ask for the, you know, the storm drainage, you know, get the survey plan, get the storm drainage, get the layout, which is what's typically produced on, on a project, that if you have a design professional working on it, if you just have a contractor doing the building and then the site is outside of that and the peer view engineer gets called in and now it's a different ballgame, now it's you pushing a rope, that's a different ballgame.
Yeah, no, I understand, and I, I don't argue with that. I'm arguing with a much smaller, much smaller project.
Would it make sense, Mary, to do two things, to, or Bill, is to put this off a little bit and consider in 6B2, increasing that thousand square, or leaving that thousand square feet alone? I mean, the 2,500, you know, think, rethinking that, because I hear this concern for smaller landscaping projects, which seems like it might become a problem. And then to just get, try to get a sense of what the magnitude is of the, of those types of projects. Do we have a sense of how many?
Of the small landscaping projects?
Or just the, creating the land disturbance of more than 20? Right now, it's creating a land disturbance of more than 2,500 square feet in areas with slopes greater than 10%. That's the way it is right now. How many of those do we get? So should, should we just leave it at 2,500 square feet?
The board certainly could leave that at 2,500 square feet and monitor it over this next year, especially if you choose to lower the other threshold.
Right.
Because then you can
That's a, 20,000 is, is just way too big to leave that, the way, in my estimation, but.
And then we could certainly track those steep slope ones that either trigger you or are right below your thresholds and maybe keep track of some of the characteristics of those. And that might inform you better next year whether or not you want to adjust that threshold or not. I do agree with you that that 1,000 square foot one, that could significantly expand your workload and that might be something, when we're talking about steep slopes, to really sharpen our pencils on the limited site plan review about the parameters of that.
Which we would be able to do next year.
Which you would be able to do next year. And it's, given your concerns about workload and really gauging the impact this will have on you, that might be a way to start getting after some of these projects that are most egregious.
What were you suggesting, Judy?
To, to limit this change
The land disturbance to what, 2,500?
To 6B8.
Yeah, so just change the one under one and leave the rest of the language the same.
Rest of the language.
Right, leave item three and not item four.
So would you replace the existing text of subsection one?
Right, B1.
With the following?
With
And then just have one and then get rid of the rest.
Right, so really, we're just doing item three?
Right.
Well, and item one, deleting item 1, 6.
Well, I think, I think you'd be, do all two, but it would read
You'd do 1, 2, and 3.
amended 4B, 6B to replace the existing text of subsection
B1.
One with, and then parentheses would start just right before the one, I mean, the, yeah, the quotes would start right before the one and end right after the 5,000 square feet and then the rest would be deleted. Does that make sense?
Yeah, I mean, that's what I, I think, kind of given this conversation, that seems to make sense.
Yeah. Yeah. So that seems okay to you, Susan, to do that?
Yeah, I mean, that's, that's kind of, I mean, what you were planning on doing was more restrictive and you're bringing it, leaving it the status quo with two.
Still within the scope.
So it's still within the scope. Because you're choosing not to change something in the bylaw, so that's not, that's not a problem scope wise. It also does kind of a baby step approach, which is something that the board has done in the past too, is kind of make a change, see what the effect of it is and reevaluate it, yeah.
How do other people feel about that?
That's right.
Yeah, I mean, I don't have a great frame of reference for the difference between 1,000 and 2,500 in terms of numbers and context, so that certainly works for me. I mean, it addresses the workflow issues, it addresses some of the other, just bringing more people in front of us, maybe. You know, the question might be though, are those the most egregious issues, the ones on the slopes? Or are the most egregious ones just more?
I think unmanaged construction sites can be a problem, no matter whether it's flat or a steep slope. I mean, so you're taking a good step towards trying to close the gap and I think that we can work over the next year to provide a little more data to support changes for the steep slope. And who knows, maybe over the next year, you may find that that 5,000 needs to be modified, right? I think it is a good first step, though.
Right, is, are people ready to advance it tonight?
Yes.
But Judy's to give change?
Yes.
All right, okay, Judy, you want to make the motion?
Here you go. Thank you.
Can I read this whole thing?
No, I think, because it's already in the record. So I think that the motion is to recommend town meeting adopt
Article BBB as, to amend the zoning bylaw regarding site plan review thresholds as written in the record.
Yep.
But item two is deleted. Item three is now item two. And item four is now item three. Item four would read by amending section 4B, 6B to replace the existing text of subsection one with, quote, create a land disturbance or an alteration of drainage patterns over an area greater than 5,000 square feet, end quote.
Did you delete that all projects which?
Yep.
All projects that, okay.
Yeah, it's just replacing subsection one.
Okay.
All right, is there a second? Any further discussion? All's in favor?
Aye.
All right, brings us to our last discussion of articles tonight, which is section 3-G, downtown Hingham overlay district, intended this article is to modify the provisions of section 3-G to make minor corrections to clarify the requirements for the first floor commercial use regarding location and the extent of the building footprint that must be dedicated to the commercial use and clarify the locations dwelling units within a commercial residential building with multiple ground floors or act on anything related there too. So I don't think this is ready for vote tonight, but we are going to discuss it.
I think you should be, I think
Yeah, be great, thank you.
So, Mary, Emily and I discussed this at the end of last week and just kind of talking about, you know, what's the, kind of what, what the board, Mary, was just kind of conveying to us, what she felt kind of the board was trying to achieve. You know, some of my comments, as with the other ones, one was more just putting, it's just more form over substance. It was just putting the change in context for kind of the casual reader of the warrant. Again, item two, again, form over substance. In, in three, I'll let maybe Mary speak to what, what the intent of number three is. And then item six is adding in the commercial residential building definition. And the only change, even though it's kind of replacing the entire thing, the only thing that's really happening in that is, again, the same as you're doing in item two, is making sure that the defined terms are being used consistently so that we're, you know, using ground floor consistently throughout. So the definition is the same, other than using the correct defined term ground floor throughout it. So that, that was the insertion of item six.
I don't think I have a marked up.
I think it should have been in your pile. Was it not in your pile?
It was laid out for you.
I might have an extra.
It's right here, it's article.
It's an attachment to the
It's behind, it's behind my email.
So the front is an email.
I have some extra copies here, not too long.
Here it is. So if you have an email that says Mary at the top, Mary, these are my attached comments.
But I ripped that apart.
Oh, here you go.
Thank you.
Here, here you go, Gary.
If you want, you'll find it.
Nope, I got one. I have, I gave, I gave, I have one.
Thank you.
Yes. Um, the, the, the question that came up when, and you can see it, it's in the, it's in the, mostly in the marginal comments and this was just me kind of documenting the conversation that Mary, Emily and I had, was, you know, there's, the 80% was a question that Emily had from, in kind of the zoning board administering it. But then saying, okay, whatever the percentage that the planning board chooses to recommend, 80% or other, to provide some flexibility for the zoning board because every property in the downtown is somewhat, like, it's all, you know, every street is not the same in the downtown, every building and every lot in the downtown. And would the planning board consider recommending, giving the zoning board to approve a lesser amount if they made certain findings to justify it, to other, to avoid having to create a variance situation? So if you say it's 80% and there's no flexibility, then if someone had a legitimate reason, for example, you know, the planning board said, well, listen, we want you to get this many parking spaces on there, but that means it would bring it down to 75%, but they wouldn't be able to do that without a variance. So that, that was the concept, but the ideas that were laid out here were just ideas for discussion purposes and not necessarily, you know, this is the magic formula. Is that fair, Mary?
Correct, so we started, we had a good conversation and we talked about the 80% and the genesis of that. And what I explained to Emily and Susan was that the board, when we drafted this text, we set the 80%, but we all acknowledged that we weren't convinced that, that may not be the right percentage and we set it high, understanding it could be adjusted down without having a scope problem, but if you set that percentage when we initially wrote the article at a lower amount and then you, at say 20% and you decided you wanted 50, well, that could have ended up
Right.
a scope problem. So that's why, you know, because we started out saying, well, where did the 80% come from? That's what we did, is we set it higher. I did give you a draft chart that I had done last year. This doesn't have the benefit of the Water Street property or that 16B North Street mixed use project, so I apologize for that. But just to call your attention to this, when we're talking about just the footprint, what percentage of the footprint is commercial use? And if you look down towards the bottom percentages, commercial use footprint, 2533 Central Street, it was approximately 19% commercial of that footprint, the building footprint. 6 Station Street was about 55%. 11 Bank Ave, approximately 31. Lincoln Building, approximately 80%. So for this board, I wholeheartedly agree that a relief valve should be put in because every property is different downtown, they're different sizes. You could have an assemblage with a strange shape. I mean, really, this is going to be market driven and availability of property driven. So it's really hard to be prescriptive and rigid in, in an old downtown like you have.
This is a great chart, and if you could add the other properties to it, that would be terrific because I think it gives you the example, particularly on that footprint, that there were reasons why 11 Bank Ave was 31%, whereas Station Street was 55% given the street, the visibility from the street of the entire building. So it would give us some guidance in kind of what are the reasons why you wouldn't, why the ZBA would grant relief from that 80%.
And so Lincoln Building was able to be 80% because it was grandfathered with respect to parking and they didn't have to create any parking on site.
Right.
Whereas some, like if you look at 2533 Central Street, they had to create a lot of parking on that site. So that, that created a distinction between how they could handle the site.
But because of the density that they chose
Right.
they had to create even more parking. So there is this give and take. If they hadn't chosen so much density, they wouldn't have had to create so much parking.
They would have had a higher percentage of retail.
But Lincoln Building is a
The number 31% seems to be way low to me. And I get that the building was kind of unique and parking to be created, but 31% doesn't, 31, hearing 31% is exactly the reason why we're proposing this bylaw. Because this doesn't, doesn't jive with the, with the intent of the, of the overlay district to create retail.
I would suggest to you that 80% though, may not be realistic, or you may find, that may be something where if you set it at 80% and then have clear parameters as to how relief can be granted, that might be another one where you track your experience and then perhaps come back and tweak it in the future.
What are you thinking about the parameters for the?
So, I mean, these were just thrown out as various kind of situations that came up. So, for example, so it would be the zoning board would have to make two findings, kind of X and Y. And under X, there is a kind of various different factor. Y would be not detrimental to the streetscape, right? Because ultimately, that's the biggest concern for the character of the downtown. So that would, that finding would always have to be made. But the, in this, in this example, under X, it could be, you know, one or more of the following. So some of the things that were run out was, okay, well, they need to provide a certain amount of parking. The planning board determines you need this many parking spaces. And if they need to, excuse me, create kind of an entrance, a curb cut, say on whichever street, South Street, Norman, whatever, to get behind the building, because most of the buildings don't have a corner. So if the only way you're going to get to the parking is to drive kind of into the building, then it may be that you need wider, and I, and I know that Ben might have had some thoughts on this in the email he distributed to the board, you may need, thank you, kind of a, this 80% of the linear width of the structure, depending on how wide the structure is, they might, you might need more than, or less than, you might need more than 20% to create a drive in to get underneath. So the thought was, okay, if the, if the planning board has done its parking determination and you need to modify these percentages in order to allow that to be met, then that would be a reason the board could decrease the percentage. One of the other examples, and Emily had brought this up, is again, and I know, Bill, you just expressed your concerns about Bank Ave, but something being so far back that it's not as actively contributing to the streets, pedestrian, streetscape was a potential reason that was just thrown in here for discussion. And then the other one, which is kind of part of a larger conversation is, because there's not that many of them in the downtown, but you had it on Bank Ave and you would have it on North Street, Station Street parking lot side of things, is if you're at two different grades. And so if that kind of, you know, kind of complicated, I'll use that word, complicated, you know, the, the design of the building. So, but again, these were just things Mary and Emily and I were kind of throwing around on the phone just to give, you know, the board some ideas of kind of what are the types of things that would give the ZBA flexibility, but without kind of destroying the, you know, the intent of the overlay district, which is to maintain that kind of small town downtown feel.
I mean, a couple, a couple of thoughts that, you know, when you look at, at the list of projects that you had put together, the spreadsheet, there's a ratio between the residential square footage and the parking square footage. And typically, the, they want to increase the residential program because it's most profitable, but the residential program requires the most parking, which squeezes out the retail. If we're looking, when I think of a mixed use district, I think of a street wall. In other words, a store wall, where you've got the store windows and you've got the apartments over the store, kind of like the Lincoln Building. Clearly, they don't have the parking, but, and I'm just wondering in this, this ratio of getting, we talked about 80% versus 40%, I think you're suggesting. And I, I like the idea of going towards the 40%, but when I
No one said
Yeah, nobody suggested 40.
No, there's nothing proposed here. The 80 is still in here.
Oh, it's still there, but I saw something in one of the discussion points. But anyway, it doesn't, doesn't matter. It just seems to me that when we look at the project that came in front of us on Central, on Central Street, that one, clearly, the four big condominium units required, what, eight spaces? Plus a handicap, which meant that you had no retail, fundamentally no retail, except in the back as an appendage. So there's a ratio between the, the retail and the, and the residential. And there's also a perceived ratio of a mixed-use district, that, you know, that you want them to be sort of equal, but intuitively, but they can't be equal because of the parking constraints, unless you can do a parking garage below grade, or you can have, you can have the parking somewhere else. So I'm just wondering, how does that drive the 80%? You know, we can say that we want so much retail, but unless we address the equation, it's kind of hard to have parameters in there that they can submit to, but also parameters that we can review.
Well, 80% is of the linear width of the structure. So that allows for a driveway to go behind the building for parking if there's room back there. It doesn't, it doesn't, the 80% doesn't, uh, restrict the number of parking spaces.
Well, the 80%, the facade length implies a volume or a square footage because the retail store is so deep. So I'm just thinking that sets you up with an area.
Well, you have both.
Yes, you have both.
80% of linear and 80% of, of footprint. So the way it's drafted in right now.
That's what I understood. And so if, if it's 80% of the site footprint of retail, unless you have a situation where the, the adjacent street is lower and you can park the cars underneath the retail for the residential up above, I don't see how the 80% is workable.
Depends on the lot and also how many, how many apartments you have upstairs. There's nothing written that says you have to put a number of apartments.
No, and there's nothing, and I think that right now, having a prescriptive criteria is the problem. We need a performance criteria that would be sort of a ratio that would be more realistic in terms of what's the density ratio that is typical on lots like this in downtown.
But people may buy more than one lot and create an assemblage. People may not want, if they have, depending on the shape of the lots or their assemblage, they may choose to have a driveway and do surface parking behind the building. It may not always be, you know, this is another one of those things.
They could, but I'm thinking there is a, no matter how big the lot is, there's a ratio between how many apartments, how many parking spaces, and how, and then there's how much retail you might want to maintain, irrespective of the size of the lot, and irrespective if the parking's under the building or behind the building. It seems to me that we could, we could put together a ratio for that that would be workable.
So if this board is concerned about activating the downtown commercial area, which I thought was one of the intents of this proposal, trying to make sure that the commercial, as possible, is front and center on the ground, street level of these commercial mixed-use buildings, the question is, um, how much of that street's, that building frontage is to be commercial? Staff would suggest that it might be a little less than 80%, but perhaps more than 50%. I mean, it's ultimately the board's decision. 20% may be a little tight to try to get turning radiuses and kind of the building designs by the time you get the driveway width and then the wall widths and the structural elements, so. And then with regard to the footprint, this chart shows you right here, with regard to the 80%, very challenging to achieve 80% of the footprint as commercial because that happened because of the unique parameters of that building. But it did happen at 55% on one instance, Sixth Station Street. That was a unique situation. You're not going to find, aside from those other neighbor buildings there, you're not going to find a lot more of those. So the board should really consider whether you want to set an aspirational 55, 60, 70% goal for footprint of commercial, and then have the burden of proving why they can't do that on the applicant to go to the ZBA and say, we can still accomplish the intent of this section and have an active commercial presence and support the downtown, but we can't make 80%, we can't make 70%, but here's why this works. And, you know, they could get the relief from the ZBA if they can prove that. I'm just suggesting to you that you could leave them both at 80%, but then you're going to be sending a lot of people to ZBA for relief.
Right, no, that's-
Right.
I kind of like the aspirational of high, maybe 65 or 70%, but given the ZBA flexibility to justify, I mean, you, you phrased it perfectly. Put the burden on the applicant to say why they can't make the 70, 80 probably too.
Let's not send everybody to the ZBA though.
65 or 70%, right.
For relief.
So from, from a practical standpoint, and there's probably people here who are builders who can speak to this better than I can, but I've been lawyers to enough developers over the years, that, that, you know, if you think about the lots in the downtown, most of them are small. They're not extremely wide, they're more deep, a lot of them are more deep than wide. And, um, there's no, there's no setbacks, right? So, um, you know, rear setback side, so if, in order to maximize the value on the upper floors, regardless of what it is, it's, you know, the most money, as you said, is in retail, is in residential. But even if it was an office or whatever, in order to maximize the value of the second floor, they want to be able to build as far back as possible and get the benefit of no, no setback requirements. If you want to build all the way back, you need structure on the first floor. And you need to create parking, so the parking's going to end up in the building. So now, instead of having a parking lot in the back in a narrow or a building or a not, you know, a kind of shallow building, you're going to have a deeper building, but parking underneath. So now you have, you've created a situation where in order to get the economic incentive to build the building, there's going to be under, there's going to be in-building parking, but now it's on the ground floor of the structure, right? So that's kind of, that's the dynamic that's getting us to the point that there's got to be parking in the first floor. So, you know, I think the percentage makes sense, but I guess the question is, um, is it, you know, and because every lot's, if every lot was uniform, like it was a grid-type New York City pattern, you could say, well, every lot is this size by this size, and we're okay if they, as long as they're at least X many feet deep of retail, then everything behind it, we don't care. But I think because of, you know, it's a New England town where the streets were laid out the way they were laid out and lots were parceled out the way they were, and there used to be a pond behind North Street and all these other things, it, it gets, it gets difficult to, as you said, be formulaic about how to do it. But I, I think that's the dyna, that's the dynamic. To get the value, you have to have structure on the first floor. Once you have structure on the first floor, instead of just open parking lot, now the parking's on the ground floor and you're triggering this, you know, retail on the ground floor issue. Does that make sense?
Yeah.
Yeah.
And so, you know, I, not to belabor the formulaic, but I think in those terms as an architect, the, uh, you know, if you had a, the residential is about two to one. Two square feet of residential for one square feet of parking. Thousand-square-foot unit requires two spaces plus circulation, that's two to one. The retail component, if you had a thousand-square-foot store, what's the parking required for that?
Five per thousand.
Is it five per thousand?
But it can be off-site.
It can be off-site, but worst case, if it's, it's five per, per a thousand, that means that, uh, you know, you need, at 200, you need five spaces per each retail. So now you're looking at a retail, you automatically start out with seven parking spaces with one-to-one relationship of the retail to the residential.
But the commercial parking in the downtown area typically is in the Station Street lot. You know, you're not really seeing commercial parking being provided on site. I would submit that that would be a rarity. What you're seeing is that people are maximizing the building envelope to get the highest density of residential. But we have another, just for example, we have another commercial residential building that is in the design phases, relatively small lot. And all that they're going to be able to do, they want to have residential downtown. If you want to have residential downtown in the business district, it has to be a commercial residential building. And what are they going to do? The ground floor is going to be half-business if it gets approved, and two under, you know, two garage spaces-
Right, that's right.
-with an apartment on top. So it is possible to have these, you know, smaller number of unit projects if they're constrained by the lot. But that one, I would say, I, I haven't done the calculations on it. But it's probably, you know, it could be 40% commercial to 50% parking, it might be 50/50.
Sounds like the parameters are the same as that ratio. I could see probably 40, but, yeah.
They'll need a complete waiver for parking downtown, you know. So for, for the board, the staff's looking for direction as to whether you want to set a hard percentage and if you want us to go back and noodle a little more about what may be more practical as you look to be aspirational.
I mean, would you, would we consider a range instead of a fixed number? Would we consider a range, 10% either way, or something for flexibility?
I think the flexibility would be the relief from the zoning board. Otherwise, we, you know, it gets too arbitrary, don't you think?
If you put in a range, they're always going to go for the standard of the range. So it, it makes sense to put in a number, and then if you're comfortable, create flexibility.
Well, that's, yeah, let's just, Kevin or Gordon, do you have any comments or questions? And I'll take a public comment and then we'll try to give you some direction.
I mean, Mary's last example probably raises the issue that even like in a one-unit, one-commercial space, parking spot situation, you're already at some half and half, some 60/40 split, and that might be the best you can do in that kind of situation. And do you want to allow that by right? Do you want them to have to, you know, justify that, that, that kind of development? And then maybe, excuse me, they have to justify that, but they have to justify every single development that has a residential component to it downtown, essentially, which is not a problem, but that's what you're requiring them to do, and you're putting that on the ZBA to grant that relief. I mean, every single time. Easy for us to do, maybe, but do we want to give this to the ZBA?
There aren't a lot of them.
I mean, there aren't, but if the goal is to revitalize and redevelop, I mean, you know, and, and the problem is they generate a lot of work in general, right? I mean, so this is just another component of that relief they're asking the ZBA to push forward.
It is a valuable conversation, though.
Definitely.
Every project is unique, and they may have unique reasons why they can do something-
That's right.
-more or, or less. And sometimes either this board or that board, in the process of having the, the discussion, projects sometimes change for the better. There is some benefit, if you can set aside the workload part of it, of the give and take. I mean, the boards really do work with the applicants and come out with sometimes solutions.
Do you have any?
No, I just, I mean, it's, it's the quirks of downtown, right, that, that got us here. And to Judy's point, there aren't a ton of them, right? So they're just, by definition, there can't be. So I think we, we try to pick a number, whether we do it tonight or on the 24th.
I'd like to pick a number, too.
Um, and, uh, and try to work to that. And I, I totally agree that working through these projects often makes them better, so.
Public comment. Mr. Wilcox.
I'd like to address three of them on the 80% frontage. I think that works fine with the exception we have in the bottom of the list here, as long as it can be adjusted. I think the zoning board of appeals made it clear that if you have residential on the second floor, you have to have some residential element on the first floor, at least an entry.
Right.
So everyone knows that. If you have a narrow building, you may not be able to get it, get a front door that's handicap accessible and 20%.
So you think the 80% is okay?
Yeah.
For staircase.
Flexibility.
Flexibility.
Yeah.
It can't be that.
As a developer, that's interesting to hear that, but yeah.
But that's for a staircase, not necessarily a driveway entrance, right?
Well, those would be the things that-
Like if you're going to have a staircase and then also entrance to a parking garage, that could be more than 80%. But then that might not be the right building because then it becomes a parking garage downtown instead of a commercial storefront downtown.
Right.
Then maybe that parking should be off-site. But if the building, if the building's small, maybe the 80% is a good thing because then, then it's just the pedestrian access lobby, whatever. And the parking has to happen some other way if it's a small building.
Well, it's the wrong building for this application.
Right, exactly.
So the whole purpose of, of this bylaw years ago was to make sure you keep a critical mass of retail downtown. That was the whole idea. And so this will preserve that. So having as much frontage as you can on the major roads. Unfortunately, our definition, when it talks about the walkable space, only includes downtown as a whole. It does not include, that definition does not go along with the commercial residential. And maybe it should.
Are you talking about in the purposes section of the downtown overlay district?
We don't use that definition. So the idea was to have the walkable retail spaces, but most restricted to retail. While you're looking at one up, the other one is the 80% of the footprint. To use a building downtown that everyone knows, the post office, their first floor couldn't possibly be 80% of the footprint because they have that retail space out front. Behind that, they have all the mechanical equipment. Behind that, it's, uh-
All the docks, right?
Just goes back, it goes back all the way to the side.
But the docks are commercial.
They're not on the first floor, they're on the second floor. So these areas downtown, there's other examples, we have different grades. And that's, that's one of them.
It's the quirks.
It may be better to have 80% of the first floor area rather than the footprint. Just something to consider, or that could be one of the exceptions that you bring into the board.
What's the difference between the first floor area and the footprint?
Because the building, the post office, the footprint goes all the way back to loading docks, but the first floor only goes halfway back.
Oh, but how do we, when we think of footprint, don't we think about the first? Like, is that the second floor back there?
This is the trouble when you're on two different grades.
Yeah.
That's technically the second floor.
Yeah, because the building footprint is large.
The backside doesn't though have frontage. It backs up, doesn't it back, just back up to residential?
Or Southern's bank.
It's not a street.
It backs up to the bank.
Yeah.
Technically.
Oh, yeah, it backs up to the, it backs up to another lot. It doesn't have frontage on another lot. But the, but the ground floor, right, butts up into ledge.
But it does kind of face a fearing road, you know.
Yes, that's true.
It does, yeah.
I'm just saying, under the argument you have, the footprint is the whole building.
Right.
And they couldn't possibly hit 80%.
So maybe it should be the first floor.
Area.
Square footage.
Yeah, that's a good comment, Ben.
The other one on differential grades, being a builder, I know I would handle this. If I was forced to use the lower floor elevation, I would just raise the downhill slope and put 12-foot ceilings in. That doesn't really accomplish what you're trying, trying to get here.
Can you, can you say that again?
So you have two buildings at four feet apart.
Yep.
And you're saying you have to use the lower floor?
No, the higher floor for the residential.
The higher floor as your grade for-
For residential.
All you need to do if you want to have a building at the same level is raise the lower floor up to 12 feet. I don't think you want to do that.
Because you don't define story.
Right. So what I'm, exactly.
I've, I've thought about that, I've thought about that a lot for many years.
Story is defined in our bylaw.
Not the height, not the height.
Oh.
The three stories is the cap, but the height of the story is not defined.
So I think you can solve this just by using our existing definition. So if you have two different elevations and they're both at, on a road, that's automatically covered in the definition you already have.
So Ben, let me ask you, so if, if you were to do your scenario of putting the 12 feet, wouldn't, wouldn't the district's commission be able to chime in and say, eh?
Not in the commission. It's not in the district. All they have is they'll recommend, for the post, is the post office in, no. Post office isn't in the district.
But I'm talking about like low, lower North Street or, that's all in the district.
No, but either way, even if it's in or out of the district, let's just say it looks nice. But is that really what the board wanted, was 12-foot ceilings just to?
To drive the building higher arbitrarily, basically, is what you're saying.
And what I'm saying is we already have it in the definition. You might want to tweak the definition. When we talk about ground floor, it says street. And I think, Susan, you've identified Station Street is not a street, Station Street parking lot.
Yeah, most of it's not a public way.
So just add or parking lot.
Yeah, I mean, there is reference to the Station Street parking lot.
But not under the residential, the location of the residential units.
Right. Well, you know, and I guess, you know, that was part of the question that was bounced around on the call is from a kind of streetscape, pedestrian walking experience, does the board consider state, the Station Street side as being that, or?
Do you, Ben?
Well, I think that definition that we used in the very beginning years ago, when we talk about walkability,
Right.
that should apply for a commercial residential also.
But to Station Street? Like, do you ever see people, I walk on Station Street, but that's because it's the shortest way to get home for me from the fruit center, but I don't see a lot of people walking back there.
It's not a retail area, no. That's what you're getting at.
Yeah, but if you have redevelopment, depending on how this is written, you could.
This is good parking, actually. It's the best parking in town.
Well, it was just a question that kind of got bounced around because, I, I mean, Station Street's only public into, in front of where, like, Sub-Galle used to be.
Yeah.
And then the rest of it is just a parking lot with a, that's literally just a drive aisle through the parking lot. But people just refer to it.
And the other one relevant to grade changes, if you have a, a property on a corner, the post office and Cafe Tosca, technically, by just reading this, the second floor is that grade on both of them. So if the post office was to be sold and someone wanted- So if the post office was to be sold and someone wanted to put retail on the first floor and apartments on the second floor, the second floor would be at grade on Fearing Road.
And the second floor could be, whatever, thirty thousand square feet, whereas the first floor is only ten thousand square feet, because the building is just cantilevered over the earth out there.
So what I'm saying, if we stuck to our original definition of what's walkable, we identified the streets, if I recall, North Street, South Street, Central Street, Main Street.
I think you're right, I'm just not...
You know, that Bank Ave property, that is exactly what happened.
Yeah, right.
You know, like, the whole, it's a much bigger building than what the first floor area is.
So those are all three.
Thank you, Ben.
Ben, thank you.
That was good. All right, so anybody else? Seeing none. All right, so with it getting late, I think we should, you know, we're not going to vote on tonight anyway, so I think we should continue this until the twenty-fourth. Is that okay with everybody? All right. I make a motion, we continue the discussion of Section Three dash G, downtown Hingham Old Lake District, a proposed bylaw which is referred to as CCC, discussion of this matter to February twenty-four, twenty-twenty, is there a second?
Second.
All's in favor?
All right.
All right, so we have a couple additional items. Mary, if you could maybe take just five minutes to go through your reports, if that's okay.
Um, I don't think I have any administrative reports that I'm remembering at the moment. I did, or Sherry, me being Sherry, sent you minutes, I believe, and I don't know if you want me to just carry those to the next agenda for you.
I didn't see the minutes.
I don't, we have the minutes with me.
Were they with you?
I'm not sure we did receive them.
Well, we just carry them over to the next agenda on the twenty-fourth, all right. And then we're going to table item three, discussion of administrative procedures.
Yeah, so as we belabored tonight, you can adopt administrative procedures. I'd like to punch up the draft a little more before the board discuss it at the meeting.
Excellent, all right. Susan, thank you for coming tonight, that was very helpful.
Oh, I hope so.
I always enjoy...
And it wouldn't be dawning without you.
That's right.
Now, I'm making motion to adjourn, is there a second?
Second.
All's in favor?
I agree.
Aaron, thanks for staying.